City council meeting for February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here, and Counselor Leahy starting to autoing in.
Yeah, I see him.
Okay.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Oh, yeah, hey, I was on mute. I'm here.
I saw you. Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well with this weather the way it is. So we'll go right to the agenda. The first item is laid on the table. Any preference for this one?
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
Motion to move from the table, the Committee on Noren's who has referred an order, the mayor, the auditor, the city financial team, as need, provide an updated controls on how the city grants are to be administered so that future governments are not facing the payments of administrative shortfalls. Recommend that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. So this was an order filed by Councillors Bartley and Bacon. It was in response to the deficits that the city has been affected with and the free cash deductions that we've been affected with regarding incomplete closeouts of grants that the city has awarded through different city departments. And in response, our city auditor was able to create a procedure, a protocol, for how grants will be managed and monitored over the duration of the time that we have them. And really, the ordinance, the legal form is what we were waiting on last time, and the legal form is pretty straightforward. I unfortunately don't have it in front of me. But it just says that the city, I don't, I'm not sure if you have the legal form, Counselor McGee.
I have it. I have it.
Do you mind reading it? It's very short and to the point.
Yep, so Section One, adding at the end of the paragraph, any city department obtaining a grant accepted by council shall follow procedures as developed and laid out by the city auditor in the grant procedure guide, which may be amended from time to time.
Right, and so with the language that we crafted, we have an ordinance, so there create, there is an opportunity for, you know, enforcement, but also that we're not micromanaging this process. It's really all in the auditor's hands, and the auditor gets to create and amend the process as, you know, she, he or she sees fit. I will turn it over to both the makers if they want to add anything to it.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I'll defer to Counselor Bartley if he wishes to speak on this.
Go ahead, Linda. I do, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note that we did strengthen it by using the language of shall rather than must because it does carry more impact relative to compliance. And there, I would note that we have received a couple of letters from departments indicating that they intend to take every effort to comply with this in order to try to assure that we do actually benefit our residents with all the monies that we receive and are awarded through these grants. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just, I'm just gonna make a few comments, and I don't think we ever took a vote, Todd, on taking it off the table. So we might want to take, just take an official voice vote for that. And then, just under discussion, the, yeah, this is just about good government, and, yeah, yes, we've already heard from department heads, and so that, that gives me a little bit of confidence that this will go forward. I like the fact that the ordinance committee didn't, didn't put it as a chair said, and so we can micromanage anybody. That was never the intent, but the intent is to, is to now put it in city law that put the department on notice. I mean, very similar to what we did five or six years ago, Mr. President, relative to the bonds. And I know you were very helpful with that, as was Counselor McGivern and many others, helpful to the bonds. So now, so now, we haven't had, we haven't had to face that situation again, frankly, by, by just without, we pass a bond in this body, and then all of a sudden, the department head just changes the bond. It's, it's unbelievable that they would, that they would do that and walk up to the rail with a smile on their face. But now they can't do that anymore, and we haven't had to face that nonsense again, and neither should the taxpayers. So, so I, my hope is that this will, this will bear fruit going forward. And, you know, I thank the, thank the committee, and like I said, I think we just need to take a couple of quick votes and get it off the table and go from there. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. It's been difficult the last couple of years, the deficits we've been having with the grants and the process of taking care of the grants through many departments. And that this is something that hopefully in the future, with the auditors and the department heads overseeing this, that it'll strengthen the budget process as far as, you know, what we have to, to work with on a yearly basis as far as free cash is concerned. So I, I think this is good. I'm glad this was strengthened a bit. And I'm glad that this put forward by my colleagues to try to look at the, what the overall budget is in the city and how we can sort of pay for what we have with, with the dollars that are basically paid by the taxpayers. So, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, hey, good evening, everybody. One of the things that I think is interesting regards to bonds and looking at the people who kind of are the ones who generate and get them in. One of the safety features that I think that needs to happen, and I think this is going to help it, is the fact that if any person is gone away, you know, for X, Y, Z reason, that somebody else is going to pick up the, is the lion's share of the work. Oftentimes, and it doesn't matter if it's the public schools, or it's the police department, DPW, who knows, if a person is gone, oftentimes, the person who is responsible for the bond and doing the legwork is also gone. And in the past twenty-something years that I've been here, we've got issues where the city of Hoyoke now has to pay and cover those bonds because, or more grants, rather. It's been an issue. Thank you.
Anyone further? No, and I think Counselor Bartley is right. This is not to micromanage. I, I think with the bond, I know Kevin, former City Councilman Kevin Dredain jokingly said it's the Bartley Amendment, but it was a good piece to put in on the bonds to make sure that, you know, money wasn't diverted elsewhere when we're trying to make a project complete. So it's not micromanaging, it's kind of fixing what really should be going on to make sure that we don't see these deficits the way they are. So very good work by, by the committee. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I concur with the work of the committee and support the ordinance and the language in it, and the need for the language in it. I don't disagree with the, with the micromanagement part, but I said it, and I'll say it again, it is macro managing. And the reason I say that, not because of the city council becoming involved, but because the Chief Financial Officer of the city of Hoyoke should be the person that that should have been done over the last several years. We went through a period of time when we had an acting monitor who did a great job in terms of filling in for a position he was not familiar with. But during that time, a lot of the deficits and a lot of the things began to build, and they got to a point where the Division of Local Services just couldn't take it anymore, and thus, we found the impact over the last two years on, or significant impact over the last two years on free cash. So I commend the, the language and the work of the committee. We'll vote in favor of it. Just a quick announcement, on March first, we will have our outside auditor representative, Tanya Campbell from Lansing Heath, in to talk about the two thousand and nineteen audit, which we received about four or five months ago. Her work has loosened up in terms of the, their clients in terms of what they have to do for us and other municipalities. We also have on that agenda, the issue which is on the agenda tonight, coming in under my name, of how the free cash for this, the last fiscal year, which would be for, you know, which would be the impact for this fiscal year, how it was calculated, and, you know, how it became zero, or what these deficits are in more detail. And we'll invite department heads to look at their particular deficits, and certainly by then, they'll know this language. They've already been sent the message, but this language is for real and not just, our part is, we can refuse grants. There's not much more we can do, but I think that's some leverage that we have, and hopefully will not have to use. But again, I'll vote in favor, I'm all in favor of the language, and thank the committee for working hard on it.
So you know what else? We'll just go back, just for making sure we get on the record. Motion was to remove it from the table. There was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, so back to motion was to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. We did the discussion, so passing the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee? McGee?
Yes.
Murphy? I mean, McGivern? Sorry. Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Green might have froze up there, so. The next is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? If so, you can raise the hand feature, and I'll call on you, just for those who may or may not have done this. There'll be a minute thirty seconds. I'll put the timer on. At about a minute, I'll let you know, and then you can finish up, just so we know the procedure. Seeing hand, I have a JR. And just please remember to state your name, full name, and your address, please.
Hi there. My name is John Rivera, and I go by JR, and I live on Two Laurel Street.
Welcome. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is JR. I go by He-Him, and I live on Two Laurel Street. I'm here today to discuss item number eight. I wanted to give some background before I do, though. There is something called the American Consumer Satisfaction Index. And each year, ACSI surveys consumers for feedback on products and companies. Comcast is rated fifty-seven percent, by far the lowest of all CSPs and ISPs. They have been so for the last ten years. Not only that, but Comcast has claimed the title of the worst company in America, not once, but twice via the consumerists. In two thousand and seventeen, PC named Comcast America's most hated company over Monsanto and many others. Now, I needed to go into great detail as to what the letter consists of. So I wanted to discuss what is, what seems to be newfound necessities in Hoyoke are being exploited by the monopolization of industries and their restrictions. Food, water, and air are basic necessities, but not too often do we talk about internet being a necessity. We have seen the impact of faulty internet or no internet has on our lives, the work that we do, the time that we spend with our family, and the education of our children. COVID-nineteen has shown us the brutality of this impact. If somehow you're still skeptical towards this newfound necessity, then ask the children of Hoyoke how well their classes would go without, with or without faulty internet. Go ahead and ask the one-fourth people of Hoyoke who are now unemployed how well job searching would go. Go ahead and ask the disabled community that relies on the necessity for everyday things.
There at a minute, just like a heads up.
Go ahead and ask the elderly population how communicating with their loved ones under a pandemic would go. With that being said, I want you all to take a very good look into this issue that affects our lives every day with or without a pandemic. I ask that you all take this resolution with resolve. I know that things could be worse, but I also know that things couldn't be better. I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone further for public comment? I don't see any hands up. If you want, you can unmute, say I'm missing you, or raise your hand. I don't see anyone's hands are up. So with that, we'll move on to item number two, communications.
Mr. President? Committee on Finance?
Second.
So two is communication regarding sender's email regarding the general fund for debt modules for city PEC school project that would go to finance. All those in favor?
Send a copy, Mr. President, can we send a copy to the joint committee that's going to be taking up this issue shortly?
And a copy to joint committee. So two, finance, and a copy to the joint committee.
Mr. President, if we?
Yep, Counselor McGivern?
If we could, the email itself, I don't think any of us received a copy of that. I think we've received a lot of the information on the bonding and issues that we, you know, we understand, but I don't think we've seen from our, our bonding consultant, the email.
Okay, so we'll get the email to Jeffrey and get that over to everybody?
Everybody, if you would.
Yep. Anyone else? Yeah, Counselor Graney?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Yeah, point of personal privilege, Mr. President, I filed an order last Thursday, and actually last Wednesday, and I also sent a letter that's not under the communications, it's under late file. I was wondering if I could have the privilege of having that read, that letter read into the public record with, with the commentary prior to that I am not a fan of Comcast, nor am I a fan of any of their sister television stations that are on the network, but I'd like to have that read into the public record, and I'd like to move to, to move my, my, my community, my, my, my ordinance, the ordinance that I filed up forward to, to discuss it and get it out of the way. I think both are somewhat innocuous, and rather than wait till late files, I'd rather have it done early.
So, so Counselor Graney would like to go out of order to late file B, which is your handwritten letter, Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Okay.
So, President, can we vote on item number two first?
Yep, so item two was to receive, send to finance with a copy to the joint committee, and then the email to be sent by Jeffrey to all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now to Counselor Graney to go out of order. It was seconded, then to suspend rules to take up B. And just for, to everyone's knowledge here, it was filed. He did put it in the box down, but it missed the filing deadline of twelve o'clock on Thursday. But he did have it in timely, just was, wasn't received because it was in the box out, outside at City Hall. So with that, I'd say to ask that the council take it up, and then I can read it into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Two, myself, President of the City Council, dear President McGee, this letter, and Counselor Graney, you can stop me anytime because I'm reading your handwriting.
Yeah, well, I don't have a copy of it. I don't have a copy of it. You have the copy.
I'll do my best. This letter is a response to, to a post on social media regarding my supposed vote on the Comcast data cap issue at the February second, twenty-one city council meeting. First of all, I've never received the text of the resolution prior to the meeting. As a result, I had no time to gather any information on the issue. Third, I will never support any order or matter that I have not had a chance to read and consider. Finally, the city council should be careful how we handle any resolution or matter before us because many of these issues are agenda oriented, and we need to know all the facts prior to the vote. Very true of yours, Counselor Graney, city council at large.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Graney, that you want received and just received?
Just received, yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Graney, what else? Because you mentioned?
The, the order I filed on, on the packet.
All right, so that would be late file C.
I think they're related, Mr. President, I think they're related.
Okay, so that would be, that was set up as late file C, so motion is to go out of order to late file C as well?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's an order, the full packet.
Counselor President, can you listen? Can you hear me when I say abstained?
Yeah, we, we got you on record. You're abstained.
Okay, I was just gonna make a note of it, so.
We're not bo-
Yeah, we didn't vote on it, Jim. So you're, you're all right. The full packet including the agenda, correspondence, committee reports, motions, and proposals by councillors be provided in a hard copy to any councillor who prefers this type of communication a minimum of twenty-four hours prior to Hoyoke City Council meeting. Counselor Graney, that's the order that I have.
That's the order. I don't know where it would be sent to, but the rationale is I like to have hard copy to read, take notes on, and so forth. I don't have a printer, and once again, I realize that a lot of councillors prefer a different method of communication. But this is the method of communication that I prefer, and I would greatly appreciate having all this data and information in front of me prior to taking any vote on the city council, at least twenty-four hours, so I can peruse it, digest it, and do the proper research to make sure that I have a, an educated vote on each and every issue that comes before the council. Once again, I-
So this is more of just a preference of if you would like to have the hard copy given to you. So I did go through all the emails, and every councillor's name was there for emails to receive the documents. You're just saying you can't print it, so you want a hard copy.
Yes.
Okay.
And if it goes to chartering rules, it'll sit there for a while. Once again, we have meetings between now and then. Then I can come to the City Hall and pick it up if it's made available to me. I, you know, that's, the issue is, I would like to be able to, to read this information, not read it off a phone or a computer. And once again, I realize a lot of the councillors don't want it. If there's any expense that's involved in printing costs, I'd be willing to pay that, but I just prefer that method of communication. And if it goes to chartering rules, it's gonna sit there, and there will be meetings that come, come by where I won't have this information, or I, I won't have the copy in front of me to read. And I, I think out of a sense of fairness, I understand that many of the councillors prefer another method of communication, but this is the method of communication that I and many, many of my fellow senior citizens prefer. Thank you.
Motion to receive and adopt?
Second. So motions, receive and adopt, in order to get those who prefer to have a packet that they could pick up at City Hall, I guess is what the question is. So, I mean, that, that's fine. If that's the preference, then what we'd have to do is just, you know, allow you to call in and get that information. But once again, as I will say on the record, everyone did receive this information. I don't want the public to think that information is not going out. It's just gonna be in a hard copy form, that's all. So this is motions, receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No discussion?
But do, do you want a discussion? I saw only one.
I had my hand up since the-
I'm sorry, I-
I had it up.
I, I apologize. I didn't see the hands up on the side. So Counselor Lisi, then Counselor McGivern. I apologize for missing that.
Thank you. So I just want to note, through the chair, I do have an email address for Counselor Graney, and so, you know, on the twenty-third of January, I sent out an email with the full resolution that had all the hyperlinks. And so I guess I'm just a little bit confused, like, you know, does that email work, or should we not be sending correspondence there? I, I understand that there's a preference, but, I mean, I have an email address for Counselor Graney, and so I just want to know what I should be doing with this email address going forward.
Counselor Graney, are you not getting the emails?
I'm getting, I'm getting some of the emails, yes. I'm not getting all the emails.
So I should be deleting this email from my-
No, no, you, you send me the emails, that's fine. Once again, I have a difficult time reading it off the phone.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, because it sounded like in the, in the previous order, there was, you know, some, some sense that you weren't receiving information that was sent out, and so, you know, given-
Well, I, I didn't receive that email in time. I didn't, either I didn't receive it, or I didn't read it, or my phone didn't ding loud enough or something like that. I don't know.
All right, on the motion.
All right.
Counselor McGivern?
I think the reason I made the motion, Mr. President, was, one, to put a little teeth in the need, when the need is there, to get a hard copy that we make sure, because what we're talking about here is two things. One is a late file, which sometimes we don't know is, is gonna be in front of us. Counselor Lisi did give us the heads up that she was filing it. She did do it by email, and I understand not all, many of us can print at home, but the truth is, it's not just get very expensive, it's very cumbersome. And it's very, and sometimes it's impossible to do if you're working, when you get home and you barely got an hour to get, get ready for the meeting at night, and it's a late file coming in, and an email that you received the same day. So I concur with Counselor Graney that when needed, we should have the opportunity. Now, the court's office has always been great about giving us hard copies. I attribute that to our court now and their predecessors, and it's, it's not a, it's not an issue of the court's office, but I just thought chartering rules because I think right now, I'm sure we will be accommodated for our, our upcoming meetings, but it might be something we want to put in rules. But if you want to adopt it, that's fine. It just means we adopt it, and it goes nowhere.
We just asked the clerk what she thinks on this?
Second.
My motion is suspend the rules to ask the clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the question is, what exactly is the question?
What, how, how do you think this would be handled, having sometimes you put a hard copy and other times you're sending out?
Well, it's just gonna be difficult if I have thirteen councillors telling me some, some want some things in hard copies, and some want them electronic, and then everything's switching every meeting. It's easier to know this councillor wants a packet with everything. And the way that this order is worded from Counselor Graney is that he wants everything printed. I mean, that's, that, that could be thousands of pages long. I mean, I come home with all of the paperwork for these meetings, sometimes in a mail tray because there's so much paperwork. So I just hope that that's something that everybody realizes. If they want everything printed, it's gonna be everything, and it's going to be hundreds, maybe even thousands of pages, which if that's what you guys want, that's, I'm happy to do it. But it's gonna be difficult if I have thirteen councillors saying one meeting they want this, this, and this hard copy, and the next meeting they want everything electronically. It's gonna be kind of confusing if everything's just not kind of continuous the same through every meeting.
Thanks.
So I guess if, if councillors want, I know Counselor Graney wants everything hard copy, so I'm happy to print everything for him hard copy. If there's anybody else, I'm happy to print all of that as well.
So Counselor Barr Martinez has her hand up, then Counselor Graney.
Yeah. Excuse me, with the request of what Rooney's asking, can we just get a sense and account tonight? Who really would like to see it, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a packet, and then decide from here and we're moving forward so we can move on the motion? I think that, you know, we should become more and more efficient in saving electricity, paper, and all of that, and seeing the amount of printing that it will take for thirteen of us. We should just decide who is only needing that, or letting you know, and moving on the motion that we can just know who needs it. I don't think all of us need it, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not gonna need a printed, so just giving my opinion on it, and I think that we need to save the trees, please. We gotta save many trees. Thank you.
Counselor Graney?
Mr. President, whatever the council decides is fine with me. I don't want to make it a big issue. I would just prefer that method of communication for myself, not for everybody else. Whatever the, the committee decides is fine with me. You know, there's no sense going to war over something like this. I just, I just appreciate the fact that you're taking it up and you're at least listening to my concern that this is the method of communication that I prefer. Thank you, that's all.
Anyone further? I don't want to miss anyone here.
Can I just say one more thing? I think Gladys is, is right. If everybody that wants a packet, it would just be helpful to know now going forward so we can make sure on Fridays we're preparing those packets.
We do, can we just-
Mr. President, could I amend, could I amend my, my, my emotion to, to say that?
So how about that we just, you know, for meetings that we get something out to Counselor Graney in hard copy because of the situation he has? I haven't heard anyone else saying that they wanna go forward in a different approach than what we've been receiving. Would that be correct from everyone?
Yes.
Counselor President, if anybody wants to do it, they can email the city clerk tomorrow, so we don't have to take any more time on this issue.
So, so if, if your mind changes tonight, email the clerk tomorrow to, to get- So, so i- if your mind changes tonight, email the clerk tomorrow to, to get hard copies. So this one is at its. What we have Counselor Granie, I was received and complied with.
It's motion to receive and adopt on the table.
Receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so now we're back to the original. Which would be communication number three, which is from, uh, the clerk's office in, uh. Uh, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, which is the February second, twenty twenty-one minutes.
Make a motion to receive the minutes and approve.
Okay. Motion is receive. Are there any questions or changes, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pr- uh, my, yeah, Mike's, let me just get this off here before I forget. Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Let me just see if I can navigate this thing. Uh, of course I can't, but it doesn't matter. I know what it was. Um. Uh, I just want to point out, uh, once, one small thing a- on there. Um, re- re- relative to a discussion, uh, we, we had, um, and this is, this goes to what I think the public speaker had it. At, at number eight. And so if, if anyone's so inclined, um, because I, 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 I took, um. I took criticism online. I don't mind it really, uh, when, when it's, when it's fair. I'll take all the criticism in the world, but, uh, when it's, when it's unfair, I, I, I won't take it. And so I took criticism online because, uh, a counselor posted my name relative to an order. R- relative to a resolution last week. Now. Our rules are very clear about not calling up by names. It's not just within the body, it's calling up by names and now it's on social media. So I'm frustrated because for two reasons, Mr. President. One, well, three, one, it's a resolution, which has the legal weight of a feather. Not pointed out. Number two is that the, um. Uh, it was a show of hands. We did not take a vote. There was no, I, I didn't vote no. You never heard me, you, you never heard the word no. I just didn't raise my hand in support of it. And that's, maybe, that, maybe that's a distinction without a difference, but I think there's a, there's a reason why we have a show of hands, is the reason why we have a roll call. The reason why we do this, this stuff. They're all different. And a show of hands is just that, Mr. President. But third of all, and more to the point, and this is where again, I will again compliment our administrative assistant. I know I'm oh for two in voting for him and I don't think my record is going to change anymore, but. I was very, very happy with our former administrative assistant, even though I didn't vote for him. And so far, I'm very happy with the current administrative assistant. Because if you go to page twenty of the minutes. It clearly says in the minutes, and this is, this is without me, this is what I said there, but the administrative assistant took note of it and put in a minute. It clearly said in the minutes, Mr. President. That if I had a chance to consider all the options, most likely I would have voted for the resolution. But yet, I'm vilified online as having voted no. So A, that's a violation of our rules and B, it's a total fabrication. By a, by a, a veteran counselor, they should know better. They should know our rules. So I'm, I'm frustrated to the hilt. So the proof is there. So anybody who gives a darn. It was, 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 was criticizing me, criticize me all day long, but criticize me based on facts. So go to page twenty of the meeting minutes, you'll read what I said that night. Give both sides a chance to, to speak before us and I said, most likely, I would fall on the position of supporting it. But I didn't get that chance because it's thrown out there in social media and boom, I get hit. Not fair, Mr. President. Thank you. And thank you, Jeff.
And so no change to page twenty. It's good, it's correct as read, as Counselor.
Correct as read.
Now, Counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you. I just want to show everyone the social media post that's being complained about. It just says the resolution passes seven to four with the counselors voting no, who those people are. And I just say congratulations. There's nothing that is criticizing anyone. There's no one, there's no shots taken. It is a fact of the matter. That this was the vote of the council, which was a public vote. Public information from the beginning. I am not making a valuative statement here. It is, this is what happened. These are the people that voted for it. These are the people that didn't. And to say that I am conjuring up. And, you know, incorrectly, you know, representing people, I, I, I think that's the fabrication that we all need to be worried about. This is called accountability. This is how people voted. That is the public record. I did not alter it. Thank you.
And a motion?
The motion is that the minutes are in order as is with no changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the four from John Kelly, Chair of the Hoyoke Planning Board. Letter of voting candidacy to appoint Kate Kirk Meyer. As the Planning Board Representative to serve three years on the Writing Resource, uh.
Motion to send to public service?
Mo- motion is to send to public service. All of, what, what, did someone, Counselor Hernandez, did you say something?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Do we get, can I ask a question?
Sure, Counselor Murphy.
Do, do we get to have a vote on the Planning Board's representative?
I think it's just they're appointed by there, but. But it's just we receive it to send to public service.
Okay, okay, but we're, we don't get to.
No, they're appointed by that, by that board as one of their members.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
No, I was going to point it out that we don't get to confirm this.
No, but I think for these, because they're. They're members of a board, we've been sent it to committee, kind of like you said in finance, which is to save in the archives for future generations.
Motion.
So, or you can just receive it, but to public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, five is from, uh, Lori Belanger, the Purchasing Director, letter in response to the school department's rehab, uh. Procedure for owners, uh, project manager.
Receive before the committee of finance, please.
Motion is to send to finance or the copy to joint committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six is a letter from the receiver with regards to the schools.
Received and sent to the joint committee.
Motion is received.
President, can I, can I have a copy? I don't have a copy of this letter either.
Can I have a copy as well?
Did everyone get a copy or no?
I have.
No.
No, I don't think so.
Um, so it says, it's more of an email. Um, I had it sent as a communication.
I sent it to everybody and there's no letter attached. It's just the email saying that he was resigning.
I got that.
Not resigning, no.
No, I, I see it. I see it now.
So, dear HPS community, Hoyoke Public Schools receiver Alberto Vasquez Matos is currently on leave. The Chief Financial and Operating Officer, Anthony Soto, will temporarily resume the role of receiver. We do not expect there to be any disruption to Hoyoke schools. Students and we will share more information when possible. So I received that from the schools and talked with, uh, Anthony Soto and he asked that I send that out to everyone as a communication, which is what we did.
Okay, Counselor President?
Yeah, Counselor Lee.
Um, okay, so I did see that part. I thought there was maybe a letter attached. I was here at timeframe. Is the, uh, the good receiver coming back or is, uh, Anthony Soto going to be appointed? What's going to work with this?
No, no update at this time.
Thank you.
Once I get it, I'll be the first to get it. I guess I, once I got that, I sent it out to you after I spoke with Anthony Soto. So once they get me something. You'll be the first to receive it.
I will, thank you.
Alright, so that one would be just to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, seven is a communication from MIFA. Which was a breakdown of. Yeah.
Copy to finance, please.
Send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight is a letter, uh, from Comcast, letter of a resolution opposing internet data caps and committing to analyze, uh, internet access affordability.
Be received.
Received.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor Aiken.
Thank you. Um, so relative to this letter. Um, this letter to me is important because it shows the other side of the story that I and. Some fellow counselors wanted to hear before we voted on this matter. And from where I sit, when a fellow counselor aspiring to higher office posts votes noted as taken. Um, which I object to the characterization of that. Um, without hearing both sides of a story, I think that's our job as public servants before we vote to hear. The facts of the matter, to hear both sides when there are two sides of a story and there's always at least two. Um, personally, I think it's our job to listen and to best represent our constituents in that way. And now that we have more information than we had at the last time. It seems that our very small majority by their vote were actually supporting the super users. Not really the regular users. In thinking and talking about these data caps. And so for me, it again underscores the importance of getting all the facts before we make a vote. And also the importance of having our actions accurately represented to the public. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos. You're on mute.
So, yep, I know. Thank you. Yep. So I, you know, before I took that vote, I just want to clear, be clear. For everybody home watching, I did my research. And I will tell you this. This is a bad time for Comcast to put a data cap and I'll tell you why. Because we have teachers that are, that are teaching from home to a ton, to a ton of students. That cap will affect those people. So when, when, when Comcast tells you, oh, it's not going to affect the regular users and. Who are the regular users and why all of the sudden during a pandemic, they decide to do this? Think about that, folks. Why during the pandemic did they decide? To start putting caps on data usage? That is unfair. And for all of those, including everyone here who pays their high bills every month. I did the research for you folks, okay? This will affect a good majority. Don't let them fool you by saying it's not going to affect the normal folks. The normal folks, the new normal is being home, using a lot of more data, causing you to be capped. Think about that. So I'm not going to fall for Comcast's game. I know what I'm doing. I did my research. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, I don't know if we're debating receiving a letter or debating something that's not before us, but on the motion, please.
So the motion, there was none. That's what I was waiting for. It was to receive or.
Motion can be received.
To receive.
I'm making a motion. We sent it to DGR Committee and I think we ought to have a discussion. I mean, we got more information and, and both sides can come out and talk about it. I think the more information we get, and I would certainly. Uh, ask, uh, for some kind of a, a survey of Ca- Comcast customers. In Hoyoke as to how many might be affected, uh, with, with this data cap. So I mean, I think we need more information. I think. This is a perfect letter to start getting more information. I'm, I'm glad they sent it. But I think, you know, we have a chance to hear more options, hear more comments, hear more concerns.
Alright, so. Feeling is to go to DGNR?
Yep.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All the opposed, so that goes to DGNR.
Same.
And Counselor Leahy is abstaining. Nine is from Mass DOT, which is with regards to. I think everyone saw this. This was the reconstruction of I ninety-one, air change seventeen, route forty-one.
A motion to receive and send a copy to DGR, please.
Motion to send to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I said, I did a bunch of legwork on this and I, I'm very happy for, uh, all the residents of, uh, Lindor Heights. Um, I had, um, when, when this was happening, I had a neighborhood meeting up there. I got petitions signed. And I'm glad that, uh, Mass DOT District Two listened to the neighbors and, uh, that's that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it was, uh, it was a good letter. Uh, for those who don't understand it, they're, they were trying to reconfigure ninety-one. And one forty-one, but did not take into advice or the concerns of the people on Lindor Heights, especially the traffic issue for them. They actually get out of the, where they live. Uh, and the response was that they'll deal with it later. Kind of, that's kind of what Counselor Leahy and I got. Um, after a lot of meetings, a lot of community outreach, um, that, that issue has been addressed, so that's a good thing. Ten is from the Hoyoke Coalition Community Coordination, uh, on behalf of Healing Studies. An email to invite the council to assign a representative. Want to send it to Public Safety?
Uh, I na- I nominate, uh, Counselor Burgos.
Thank, I was about to nominate myself.
Do you want me to nominate? We can take it right now.
Just take it right now.
Let's do it.
Motion is to allow, or not motion, but Counselor Anderson Burgos, would you like to? Be the representative for us?
Absolutely, my honor.
Alright, so we will email them and tell them that you have been, uh, appointed. You were kicking and screaming, but you know, you, you, you did it. Now, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And a motion to receive.
The motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eleven is from. Community Outreach Meeting for Green Grab Inc. for Cannabis Cultivation Establishment.
Make a motion to receive and send to the ordinance.
Yeah, you want to take eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen together? I think they're all the same thing.
Yeah, second.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Make one comment.
Uh, Counselor Murphy, go ahead while I pull this together.
Yeah, I know, uh, that the representative from Green Grab is, has sent me. And you'll know that I'm not the most computer literate, but I saw a chat with my name on it and, uh, he just asked me to, uh. Let you know that they're, uh, MDO, a marijuana delivery operator, uh, even though on the thing it's listed as a cultivator. And he asked me to make the correction when it comes up, so, uh. Just so you know, i- it is a marijuana delivery operator, not a cultivator.
Which one's, number eleven, Counselor Murphy?
Eleven, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And a motion.
So eleven, twelve, thirteen. Motion to suspend rules, take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So eleven, I read. Twelve is the cannabis provisions, annuals, uh, special permit reporting requirement. Thirteen is the Paper City Cannabis Abbey Property Management, uh, Information Meeting. Uh, and then fourteen is a notice of community outreach meeting for the Marijuana Establishment for twelve Crescent Street. So all those two ordinance, ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
President's report. Uh, quickly, first is, uh, a lot of us may have seen just from this meeting. With regards to Counselor Gladys Aborn Martinez, uh, and her update to the council. Uh, I did reach out to her prior to this meeting. Uh, Counselor Aborn Martinez, I'll call you Gladys as I always have. Thank you very much for your years of support. Uh, in your service to the city, uh, not only with us, but also as on the school committee. Uh, I know, um, in listening to you with regards to your, your new position, I, I'm so happy for you. Congratulations, like I said earlier. Uh, i- it's sad to see you go. I know you're not gone. You're going to finish out the term. Uh, but I just want to thank you for all your years of service, all your help and, and everything that you've done for the city. Uh, I know you said you won't be a stranger and we'll hold you to that. But I just want to make sure everyone knows, uh, here and at home. Uh, congratulations on that new position that was outstanding news and I wish you nothing but the best for your future. Um. I'll go quickly and then turn it over to other people. Um. The school floor, uh, the school floor, seeing the schools, uh, the city council chamber. Um, we are going to get the floors done over as was updated in Public, uh, Safety. Uh, they're looking at the rugs as well as something else. Uh, and then there was an issue with the, the back bathroom. Um, there was potentially cracked pipes that need to be fixed. Um, our leader, when it comes to stuff dealing with, uh, property and buildings and, and all that stuff that we kind of shake our head at. Uh, Counselor Sullivan. Spent four hours. On his own, one going to city hall, one, uh, taking a look, helping out with regards to the floor and what we could or could not do. And then the piping issue. Um, and then he called me and we spoke for over an hour trying to figure out what were the best options. So I just want, uh, Counselor. So I just want Counselor Sullivan to address what he found and really thank him for, you know, this is off his time. He, you know, it has nothing to do with City Council. It's him trying to help out the city with regards to cost and everything else and what, what better to do to fix the problems that we're seeing. So Counselor Sullivan, I'd just like to turn it over to you, just to get that update that we're talking about.
Sure. Thank you. Just out of the starting gate, I want to let everybody know you're gonna hear this word asbestos a couple of times. But at, at no point was anybody's health at risk. It, it's very, very common practice, found throughout households and everything. But the adhesive that held the carpet down in the council chambers, it's referred to as mastic. That has a small percentage, 1% content. It's, it's in there as a binder. It, it's not airborne. It would have to be ground or mechanically abraded to, to even make it airborne. The problem right now is ideally, we wouldn't want a carpet back in there because of what we've learned recently about asthma and also what we've seen with just picking up a big stain in the carpet and being ruined for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years. But to, in order to restore the original hardwood floors in the council chambers, we would have to sand the surface where this mastic adhesive is. It would be very costly. The entire room would have to be put under containment. And the fragility of the painting work, the artwork that was done on the walls there, to hang the plastic and go through that whole process would probably result in some damage there as well. Necessitating other repairs. So the, we're waiting to hear from Mike McManus as far as the, how much extra would cost to put down a laminate type wood floor over that instead of carpet. And the, the logic behind that would be maybe sometime in the future, whether it be, you know, 10 years from now or 50 years from now, that original hardwood floor would be preserved if at some point a historical restoration was wanted to be done in the room. So that, that's where we're at with that. And we're just waiting to hear the cost difference between a carpet and a wooden laminate floor that would mimic what was originally there and be easier to maintain. Second, so the, the order that we've all put up with for years, I guess, is coming from a vent, what's referred to as a vent stack. It runs all the way from the basement up to, through the roof of the, of the building. Somewhere along the lines, maybe during a roof restoration project or something else, that vent line was disturbed. It has two 90-degree angles in it, way up, way up in the eaves in a spot of City Hall I've never been to. I don't know how many others have. So there, there is some repair, I think, that can be done on that and some work, but. And I don't believe that'll be too costly. There is a crack in the pipe. We have found where that is. But overall, the whole situation of the venting needs to be addressed. What was uncovered in this process is two things. Number one is we've got to start paying more attention to the maintenance of City Hall itself as one of the most significant landmarks, if not the most significant historical landmark in the city. There is not enough routine annual maintenance being done to keep up this structure. So going forward, I, I hope all counselors and I, I hope there are different committees, CDBG, CPA, the Historic, the DPW, all the departments, we, we all need to start taking this into consideration and really focusing our efforts with the limited financial resources we have. We really need to be spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 a year on the maintenance and the upkeep of City Hall. If we don't do this, if we don't begin this process now, somewhere down the line, be it 10, 15, 20 years from now, we're, we're gonna be looking at a very, very significant problem. I would, I would not doubt somewhere in the neighborhood of 20, 25, $30 million if we don't start maintaining this and giving this our full attention. In the upper reaches where those eaves are, there's now pigeon nests, pigeon droppings, bats. The mortar is in okay shape, but unless we start doing routine mortar maintenance, now it's, it's in a situation, in a state where it's not gonna get better. I can tell you that and it's something we have to start addressing on an annual basis, just like we did with stained glass windows. Also throughout, Brennan McGee has brought it to our attention before. We, we have records that we need to start archiving. Those are just the ones that Bren has brought to our attention that the city clerk has. As we trace this pipe, it goes through numerous closets through the upper reaches of the building. There's books from the 1800s just randomly stored in different places. There's books down in the basement, records from the 1930s, 1940s. Some of it's probably junk, but a lot of it should be at, at least accumulated and sent either to a stereo hearst or to the library, to the history room and, and taken out of there. I think that pretty much covers it. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to field them right now.
Well, thank you again for going in on, you know, on your day off and spending all that time there to look up the floor issues for us and help out. I mean, that's, you know, no, no payment to you. It's just gratitude on our part, saying thank you for doing that. Counselor Aborn Martinez?
Yeah, I, Sullivan brought some important information that, that I think that if you know that I run the summer youth program, which I will no longer be doing for Mass High of Holyoke. Many times we look for projects that I just can't do to preserve and archive items that they can do that as a project. If in case you guys are trying to get anything saved, run out from the basement or, you know, any articles. I know they did that for the, 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 I'm sorry. Help me with the house, the commissioner with, Rebecca, help me with your husband. I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I'm blanking. I've been on this computer all day. But he, they helped archive and print articles that they would have gone to waste because they were deteriorating as they were getting old. And they went there to do copying and save some articles and, you know, print that they wanted to save. So I just want to say that there's many times, I'm sorry, many times they looking for projects to do and people do not know how to utilize our youth in something that they can do projects for you all. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. The last couple of ones, schools, we did have a school meeting, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Leacy, myself with the committee regarding the MSBA and, you know, where we're going with that. We will be looking to have a joint school committee and city council meeting to then start that process. As we start getting more information coming in, it will be forwarded over to you right away as to where we stand, what we're doing. By just letting everyone know, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Leacy, myself attended the meeting. It was a Zoom meeting early morning on Thursday, just kind of seeing, you know, what the updates were and where, where we're gonna be. And you did get one communication from Cinder. Let's see here, the translation for our stuff in the sense of the machines that we can do for translating our, our meetings. Counsel Murphy and I did get an update from Jeffrey regarding, and from Scott from Hoyok Media saying that they do have the ability to do it and that it'd be a modest cost was the response in the email. So now it's just getting that, that going. So we're, we're close to the process there. And then finally, we did get an email from, from Sean from the Board of Health with regards to vaccinations. I know there were some posts, whether or not, you know, we can set up sites for vaccinations. We have it at Hoyok Medical Center. So long as you're 75 or older and as they start doing different age brackets, they will, they will be there. So if you have any questions in the public, please reach out to the Board of Health in order to see what, when you can sign up to get your vaccines for.
Is that not Hoyok Health Center?
Hoyok Health Center. I, I, I said it wrong one day and I, that's why, that's why you, you're here to stop me. But any other updates that I may have missed or you saw in an email that I might have missed?
If I can.
Yeah, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I just want to thank you and I want to thank Scott and Jeff for working on the translation. I, the, the goal that we've set is to try to get us where we'll have our regular meetings sometime starting in March, hopefully, and see how that goes. So we have a trial for the three and a half months, if you will, to the end of the fiscal year. But they've worked hard. The expense is not, for the most part, coming out of any city budget. It's coming through Hoyok Media and, you know, the, the software seems to be readily available. So I'm looking forward to being able to tell some of my constituents that they can, they can listen and, and have a meeting that's interpreted in their language. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and one thing we were trying to do, we're trying to get the translator there as well. I was asking Scott to kind of see what software was out there for doing our minutes of our meetings. That's one thing that takes up. It was taking up Ryan's time and Jeff's time and Jeff's doing great minutes of meeting. But there is software out there and that's what he's still working on, on that end. He was trying to package them together. So here, let's just go forward this one and then we'll follow up with the, the minutes of the meetings in order to make sure those can just get automatically done and then allow Jeffrey to go to his regular job and not be transcribing all the time. But that'll be another update. With that, seeing no hands or if I'm missing anything? Counselor McGivern, sorry.
Just on your update, Mr. President, has a decision been made on the translation for the meetings?
They, he said he found a software system, if I can find my email, and that they will be able to proceed with it, getting, getting that done.
But the, the question some of us had was, is it verbatim?
I can, what we can do is we can have Scott come in at the next meeting and he can kind of walk us through it or give us an update on it.
Well, I, I hope so before we start using it because I think it's important what we say exactly is what's gotta be translated.
No, and he can do that. Yeah. It, it's not gonna be, I understand your concern, but we can have him come in and nothing will be done until, you know, we, we get a briefing on it or a, you know, a demo, I guess, is what we're looking.
I think we should vote on it.
Yep. But we can have Scott come in and go over it and, and see how it works and everything else.
Thank you.
Okay. No, it's not starting next meeting, Counsel McGivern, just, just in case everyone might have thought that. I apologize if it didn't come off that way. So that's the end of the report. On to reports of committees, ordinance committee.
Mr. President?
Counsel Grady.
Just one quick thing. I just want to express my, my gratitude and to Gladys. I sat with her on the school committee. She's a dedicated public servant and the city of Hoyok is, is very proud to have such a great citizen. So thank you, Gladys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Right. So with that, Counsel Leacy, where's your hand up or no or?
Yes, I mean, yeah, I'll just say, you know, Gladys has dedicated a number of years here to the city and I just want to recognize that, that hard work that she formally committed through the school committee and also through the city council. But she spent many more years as a direct sort of, you know, advocate and service provider to many people throughout the city, especially in, in her ward. So she will be missed. I am sad, I'm sad to see her go, but I also understand that it's, it may be time for her to pass the baton. So thank you, Gladys, for your work.
Thank you.
Counsel Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gladys, it's been great working with you over the years. I saw you when you're on the school committee from 2003 to 2011 and served with you the last 10 years on the council and really like to, to say that you're a dedicated individual and community member who's really, really stood up for her constituents and not just in your area in the ward, but throughout the city. And I'm really proud to, to, to be able to work with you and, and looking forward to working with you in the future, even though you won't be inside the rail, but you'll still be involved in, in the community. And I'm really happy that I'll be able to be able to see the work that you have done over the years and to continue the work that you will do in the future. So it's been great working with you.
Thank you.
Counsel Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add and just say that Gladys has been a mentor to many of us. A great leader, fearless leader of this city and one of the biggest impact that she has had has been with our youth. Specifically, I can say that she helped my middle child in believing in herself again and going out there and enrolling and getting her GED after she dropped out of Hoyok High School. She helped her emotionally as she has done with many other youths. And thank you, Gladys, for all of the years of commitment and your genuine investment to, to try to obtain equality for us all. Thank you, Gladys.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
I don't know. I mean, there's so much that everyone has already said. And what I have to say is you're not just a colleague, you're a family member. You're a strong and beautiful person that everyone in this community looks up to. And I, there's no way I could ever thank you for all the hard work, love and passion that motivated you to help Hoyok move forward, to be involved as much as you were. I, I just could never thank you. There's no, I can't even put into words. I can't even, usually I don't have trouble talking and I'm having trouble because it's hard to see you go. And I love you from the bottom of my heart. I'm gonna miss you so much. You know, I'm gonna still harass you though. So don't go.
I'm leaving the role. I'm not leaving the city. I'm a resident and I'll be here and I'm gonna be a better advocate outside. You'll see. You'll see what's gonna come from out of this. So just thankful for me to be around and that's all I can tell you right now.
Counsel McGivern.
Gladys, I just wanted to thank you and commend you for the 18 years of public service that you've given the city. Your, your voice as a school committee woman was incredible for some very difficult times. You were guiding the city council, the votes that we had to take, not just the school committee. But when you transitioned over to the city council, your voice for Ward One, and as Counsel Tomlin pointed out so appropriately for the entire city was always very loud. You, you, you knew what to say, when to say it and how to say it. And when I say loud, I've sat next to you for the last eight or nine years. And when you got loud, I had to block my ears. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you all.
Well, she's not leaving yet. We're not, we're not letting her go yet. So we still got plenty of time. So with that.
Thank you.
We'll move, if there's no one else, I don't want to miss anyone. We'll move to reports of committees. Item 15A, the Committee on Ordnance, who's referred an order in an effort to enhance food access and security for residents during these uncertain times, that will expedite the backyard chicken ordinance as well as permitting process for community gardens to ensure the easy access to use of such sites. Recommended that be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report and adopt.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counsel Leacy.
Thank you. This is before us again because due to an incomplete legal form at the last meeting, we sent it back to committee to see if there were any other amendments that the committee wanted to add. So the committee did not add anything new. It's back before you in the same version as it was previously. Only now there is a legal form. I'll go through the details, the basic details, and then I'll, I'll add a few other things. So this ordinance creates the ability for households to have backyard hens in residential zones that are R1, R1A, R2, and DR, up to six unit dwellings. Hens must be kept in hen houses or coops that provide a minimum of three square feet of space for each hen. The coop must be enclosed by a run enclosed outdoor area that provides a minimum of 10 square feet of space per hen. The coop and run must be eight feet from any side property line, 10 feet from any rear line, 50 feet from any neighboring dwelling, and 100 feet from any surface water source. Eight feet from any side property line, ten feet from any rear line, fifty feet from any neighboring dwelling and a hundred feet from any surface water source. Hens must be kept in a safe and healthy manner as described by the Board of Health Regulations that outline procedures for food storage, waste management. And cleaning and sanitizing the coops, roosters are expressly prohibited. Renters who wish to keep hens must demonstrate in writing that they have permission from the property owner. And all of this is done by special permit of the city council that includes. Uh public hearing and a a butter notification of three hundred feet from the property where the chickens' hens would be kept. Um so I as you've heard in in multiple uh meetings now, there there's a lot of compromises that go into this. Uh ordinance, uh mostly because uh many of us on the committee believe that um you know, moving something forward is is valuable, um you know, there's a belief that incrementalism is is important because. Um we have spent about a year working on this uh ordinance. Um what I'll say is, um these are my own comments, these are not uh reflected to the committee now, so I ju- I just want to sort of, you know, differentiate. Some of the comments that I'm making here, um the public hearing process um and special permit of the city council. Um is a very um you know restrictive process. Um and that's like the largest compromise that's in there and it gives the city council. Very tight control over the where, when and how um hens would be kept in the city. And so I really think it's important to have reasonable um criteria for the ordinance overall so that it could fit the most. Um different types of property and different types of situations um easily and then the city council, if they need to amend or take into consideration. Um particular lots or you know, different situations, then you can al- always create conditions that make the permit more restrictive. Um it's not, you know, we want to create something that it can be used in multiple different settings. I know that um some counselors may want to adjust the setbacks. Um I will note that this is an accessory use structure, all the other accessory uses have setbacks of um five feet from the sideline, eight feet from. From the rear, um and um we're already going further. With eight from the side and ten from the rear, so we're already um moving the um structure of the coop and run. Um further away from the property line than any other accessory use in 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 the city. Um secondly, I do want to note that, you know, this entire um. You know, issue came forward because of the need to enhance food security in the city. Um it's a real need for many of our residents and to have the ability to have hens on your property. And to understand where um you know, your food is coming from in a safe and clean um manner, um you know, it it gives it gives folks a chance to. Um you know, have an in- independent source of protein um on their plates. So that's number one, and then number two, it is clear that we have um hens being kept all over the city. And we want to be able to control and regulate this, we want to create some criteria for hen keeping. So that both the animals and the neighbors and the individuals holding and handling um the hens. Can all do it in a safe way, again, both for the hens and for the the humans and the the neighbors. Uh without uh an ordinance, we just have folks sort of, you know, doing hen keeping on their own and. You know, I I think that and for the most part, it's it's probably successful and we're not hearing a ton of complaints because it is successful. Um but why not have an the ability as a city to have an inventory of who. Who is going to be, you know, keeping hens and also um you know, provide, you know, the education. Via the, you know, Board of Health Regulations that you would get when applying for. Um you know, the education that says this is how you're going to safely handle um the the hens. How you're going to handle the the waste, the food, um to, you know, avoid predators and. You know, there's a lot of uh information that could get out to the public to help help folks do it even better and even more safely, so. Um I'm advocating for this um this evening, um and I'll just say it, you know. The process, in my opinion, has been very much gentrified, it's very expensive, um it has the. You know, with a special permit of the city council, it has about a five hundred dollar fee for entry, you know, the the pay to pay to play. Um again, I believe in incrementalism, I think it's a good start. Um I would like to see it passed, if it doesn't, I don't think it's um the end of the world and it would be uh an unfortunate waste of a a year's time of this committee. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I just uh just, I don't know if this is the right time, but I would uh, and I appreciate the work, I was on the committee, I've been there for every meeting and and I. I've tried to learn as much as I can about this, I again, I've just. I agree with incrementalism, but I think we start with as tight a process and loosen it up as we see success, not. Start the process loose and tighten it as we see issues, uh and therefore I'd like to propose an amendment, uh if I can. Uh under section two, under hens, and then uh item C under specifications and dimensions. And then under fi- five, and I would like to make uh the an amendment, so a hen house shall be a minimum of fifteen feet from any side lot. And fifteen feet from a rear lot and fifty feet, those were and ten feet from the rear or fifteen feet from a rear lot, those would be the amendments, the fifty feet from a neighboring dwelling would stay the same. This is what Chickaby has, as they put it in, if we do this and we find out we get thirty. Successful uh operations following these guidelines and there's no concerns, uh and we can move it. To be less restrictive, I would be much more comfortable doing that then than I am as a blank check now, uh you know, I I've had. Most of the people that have been coming to meetings have been positive, but people that have communicated not in meetings but in person. Uh have had concerns and I'm trying to work both sides of this fence so that we have a a realistic. Uh protection for the neighboring homeowners, uh and again, while I know Counsel Lisi you views this as a. An accessory, I view this as a uh an an addition that's got animals that are going to be there twenty-four hours a day, so. Uh I would just like to make that amendment, if I can get a second.
Second. So ju- just Counsel Murphy, so I can write it down, I'm on page. Three of mine, which is. Um what you're referring to and it says, a hen house shall be sized at a minimum of, you want to change that one first?
Number five.
Okay, number five, okay.
A hen house shall be a minimum of fifteen feet from any side lot line and fifteen feet from any rear lot line. That would be the only amendment, the fifty feet from the neighboring dwelling would stay the same.
Okay, so item five, we're changing the eight and the ten. To fifteen.
Correct.
Right, and that was seconded. Uh counselor. But for further discussion or do you want, do you want, do you want to act on the amendment first? Or go to further discussion on this, I'd say probably further discussion, so Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you, um it's been no secret at every meeting, I I've been speaking about. Um the plan that Tim Carrington had put in place back in two thousand ten. And what his ideas were is having a twelve month uh pilot program, have a study completed. At the end of it, find out what worked, what didn't work, that sort of thing. Um maybe even do a survey with the neighbors and uh that that sort of thing. Um also, you know, we did hear from the Board of Health early on, just saying that you're kind of shorthanded and I I I. I go back to Counselor uh Carrington and how he had come up with the idea of deputizing people to work with the Board of Health. To have them as a volunteer inspectors of the different uh hens and also the coops. Uh and the runs and also compost, which is also very important too, because if you don't have um. A compost uh compost program, it's going to become um quite a quality of life issue for not only the family, but also the families that surround them. I also think that uh uh Carrington uh also had the idea of of having up to fifty licenses. And having an encouragement uh to community gardens, now I believe that, you know, um. People should be able to have this, I I've gone through, you know, the pros and cons, you know, a lot of pros, especially when you come. You know, to children and your family and actually uh have a responsibility, I think that's that's fantastic thing. Um but it just seems like every time I bring up all these meetings, it was pretty much uh not listened to, um thank you.
Counsel Vacan.
So are we on the amendment or the general discussion?
I think I mean, that was one amendment, I'm sh- I'm not sure if there's going to be others, but I know people had their hands up before it, so I'm trying to let them. Talk about it, we can talk about the amendment as well and then vote on the amendment.
Okay, well, I'll just make a couple of general comments, I'm not going to go on for very long. Um I do think in the case of our city ordinances relative to chickens and the keeping of them. I think we have it right, the way it is right now, by allowing as of right in the residential agriculture zone. The keeping of chickens and I think over the years, there have been issues with people keeping chickens in apartment buildings and the like. And some of the problems that go along with that, which ends up with. Organizations like T J O going and getting the chickens in the way that they do stray cats, dogs. And so for me, I think we have an ordinance that works well from a community education point of view. And from the provision of um good and fresh and safe food for residents of our community. And um right now, I think the availability of the food and the affordability of it exists in our community. When you can still buy like a dozen and a half eggs for under three dollars. And so I really think in the middle of this pandemic and in light of all the other. Quality of life issues we have going on in the city, uh we should stick with our ordinance as of right as it's written. And not um set up a situation where we're going to have. Neighbors that object um to what is really a significant zone change, this isn't just an accessory use change. It is a significant zone change. Um in a serious way, changing use of land and property that people bought under a different understanding. So um for those reasons and some others that I'm not going to re-discuss, um we've done that many times and for many hours in committee. Um I just don't think this is the right time uh to do this particular language and. I would find myself more in support of a pilot program type of approach, thank you.
I have my hand up and new.
Yeah, Counsel Lisi.
Oh, thank you, so um yeah, I just want to make a few really quick points, um number one. Um it is its own change and we had a public hearing to um vet the issue. And again, we had overwhelming um you know, positive and informed support at those public hearings. Um there was an opportunity for the, you know, naysayers, if you will, to come out and express their um concerns and I think, again, the way that we have. Crafted this ordinance, I'd be hard pressed to understand what lingering concerns there are. Um second of all, the as of right use for the R A zone will be unaffected altogether, um the R A zone can keep as many. Um hens or roosters a- as they wish. Um and then finally, uh you know, Counsel McGivern brought up this point last time, but only the ordinance committee can draft something into legal form. Part of the reason why this ordinance went back to committee was to alter the legal form. And that did not happen, the 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 committee voted out the same legal form as last time. So I'm really unsure about how to proceed if there's a vote on the amendment, given that it would have to get pushed back to committee. And you would get essentially this, you know, closed loop of actions taking place where. You want the amendment, it's going to go back to committee, committee's going to take a vote to send the same draft back to this council, so I'm going to um. You know, press folks to turn down the amendment, vote down the amendment because it's just not ever going to come into a legal form with that amendment and. Um this is what came out of committee, so um I I you know, I think we should vote on what we have.
Counsel Murphy. Uh hold on, Counsel Graney, you'll be next, Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Graney.
Thank you.
I the the logic that I just heard is, uh I don't quite get it, uh so in effect. Uh if the if there's, uh if there were a a majority to pass an ordinance with an amendment. If I'm hearing Counsel Lisi correct, it would go back to committee and the she expects the committee will still send it back out without the amendment, therefore. The only thing we can vote on is is the original uh proposal that we have in front of us. If that's the case, then uh you know, we should be making no amendments and and in effect. Uh if that's the case, uh three counselors could be in effect holding the other ten counselors hostage.
Point of order, Mr. President, do you want to rule on that?
Yeah, uh I haven't been asked yet, hold on, Counsel, Counsel Murphy was talking.
Oh, yeah, no, but I'm making a point of order, so that that trumps, so.
But.
So I I I think it's relevant.
Talking, Counsel Murphy, let him finish and then we'll go to you, Counsel Bartley.
I'm well, I'm.
Murphy.
I'm well said.
All right, so with regards to your question, Counsel Murphy, can you vote to make an amendment to this? Absolutely you can. You have every right to amend it and the issue would be is you could send it back to committee to then get the full legal form or you could table it. Until the new legal form came out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel Graney now.
Yeah, um on this this ordinance, uh. Yeah, uh can you hear me?
Yep.
On this ordinance, uh I've done a lot of research on it, I've talked to a lot of people. Uh it's seems to be very divisive among the residents of Hoyle. Uh I've listened to all the arguments, pro, con regarding this matter. And I'm certainly not convinced that it's an economic issue. The cost to build and maintain the structure is significant, there's supplementary expenses such as feed. Cleansing materials, possible veterinary costs if any of the birds become ill. Laying hens, good laying hens cost between twenty and fifty dollars apiece. This ordinance could also possibly cause conflicts between neighbors. Therefore, as I have publicly stated previously, the proponents of this ordinance. Should gather signatures and place it on the ballot in the next municipal election. This is a fair and equitable way to allow all the citizens to voice their opinions regarding this matter. Having said that, I will vote no on the passage of this ordinance. Thank you. I appreciate all the work that the committees have done, but the most fair and equitable way to solve this issue is to get it on the ballot, thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing no one, uh Counsel Bern Martinez.
Um. This community has been divided for so long, for anything anyways, regardless what the world may be on this situation. But to say that there's not an economical reason behind it, um I think that is a very. A false statement because I don't know who you could have all interviewed regardless. Who's opposing this, but this is wrong overdue. Ten years ago, when I got on this board, do you know that one of the jokes, I was out of this, I was out of. On a conference, I remember in California, and we were known for the joke about the chickens in Hoyle, Massachusetts, that it took ye- months and months. In discussing this topic in regards to this vote, and this is when um Carrington was alive and it's a shame that we're still discussing an issue and a matter. That requires a vote and we still going back to sending it to having amending and amending it. And it's a tactic to try to push this out and let it die and I think, let's get it over, let's do this, let's try it out, if it doesn't work. Listen, we put a stop to it, but right now, this should be a done deal, this is a shame, we should be ashamed of that, I'm ashamed of that. At least me, I am ashamed of that, we're trying to do full security here, we're prolonging this situation, we voted on things that we didn't like to have voted in my ten years here. And I gotta say that this is a shame that we're still trying to fight an issue of it, uh of people wanting to have chickens in their neighborhood. People would never love each other, no matter what you try, you try to make neighbors like each other, they may not like you. And the chicken is going to be a difference about it, it's the same thing, they can complain, some people complain about. Loud noises, they have ordinance, they had, they complain about uh you uh having neighbors in your house and issues or even a fence being put up. There's always been going to be complaints, let's put this through, let's figure it out, whatever the committee recommended at this point, let's get it through. And let's start coming back with amending because the amending is what it's doing is sending it back. Pro- um procrastinating the process or holding it up and I think it's it's it should be a done deal and let's get this over with because it's it's. Really embarrassing, like I said, ten years ago, I go to a conference and that's what I hear at this conference in California. That people knew us because of a a a conflict of of voting. That people knew us because of a a conflict of voting on that and I didn't even know about it and this comes up again, you know, and it's been here probably for a year. And the discussion matter, this is this is, we should be ashamed.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I just have a statement. Um I I I feel, no, I don't feel, I know it's time for us. To remove our feet, our foot, from the necks of the people of this community. I think it's time to allow this community to grow a little bit more. I feel and I know that this this order, it should pass. Let's let it pass and change it as it goes. Because again, we need to take the stronghold that we have on the community, on a community such as Holyoke. We need to remove it, let them a little, we need to give them a little bit more room to breathe. And especially during a pandemic, this might bring some happy, some joy. To those people who are who are either depressed or suffering. This is a time for us to grow. I know, you know, I don't I don't believe that there's gonna be a ton of people rushing to to buy. Things to to create the the, you know, the the cages and 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 so on and so forth. I I think this is a time for us to allow the community to breathe. That's all.
Counselor Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, um Mr. President. I just wanted to um add that um. I wasn't gonna really say anything because it almost seems like there's so much hostility and um. Bringing forward all these amendments and these changes, you can see the the intent and the. And it's not really in good faith because um it's like um Counselor Lebron says, um we um. You know, we're being spoken about all the way on the other side, California, about how this town and city. Can't get it together to pass something that's gonna alleviate the economic um. Economically strapped people that live here and that are part of this community and that have these small lands. That they can enjoy from having some hens. And why is it that we can't believe that this city? With the fantastic, amazing people that habitated that we cannot come together to raise some hands. The right way in a safe manner that's going to cultivate, maybe yes, it's gonna cause maybe some issues. But it might cultivate more relationships than the problems that it's going to cause. Um not everybody is going to build a case like Anderson Burgos says and have chickens. As soon as this passes, there's gonna be people that are not going to want to, that might enjoy the neighbor's chickens. And the neighbor can, you know, share um eggs with with their neighbors. It's gonna be something that. It's a natural thing. We can do it. Other cities do it. We don't have to be so prohibitive. And continue to be hostile with all of these amendments. You're being hostile to the community and the economically strapped people of this city. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands. The amendment was once again, uh section five, changing eight to fifteen. Changing ten to fifteen and that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands.
Yeah, a show of hands.
Can we do a roll call?
Roll call, one, need two other members asking for a roll call. Roll call, two, roll call, so. There's three. So with that, the clerk will call, roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to change eight and ten to both to fifteen. That's the amendment.
No, 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 no. It's it's um sorry, it's eight to ten, ten to fifteen.
No, no, it's eight to fifteen and ten to fifteen. That's the amendment.
That's what I meant. Sorry if that come out. You're changing eight and ten, both to fifteen is what I said, do you know?
Correct.
Did that not come through? My com- my computer, my internet has stalled a couple times while listening to people. So just if, stop me if you don't hear me. So once again. Hen house shall be a minimum of instead of eight feet, fifteen feet. Uh from any side lot line, ten feet amended to fifteen feet from the rear lot line. And fifty feet from the neighbor's dwelling.
Correct.
Alright, so that is the amendment. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Seven yeas, six nays.
Wait, you vote your amended that?
The President, make a motion, refer to the law department, we put it in legal form and lay the order on the table.
Second.
Motion is to refer to the legal department and lay on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I froze up again. I didn't hear any no's. Once again, I'll say it again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So it'd be laid on the table.
I'm so, hold on, hold on, can we, the question was, I thought that um was proposed to be sent to the legal for legal form and. And what are we voting on now?
It's it's late, it's, no, it's laid on the table with the legal department to get us back the final copy that was amended. Alright, Finance Committee, sixteen.
The motion to take items, one, um sixteen A and sixteen B as a package, please.
Sixteen A and B as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh sixteen or sixteen A, uh seven thousand, from finance, seven thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents. From reference library assistant night to reference library assistant. B is from finance, a transfer of thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty seven dollars and thirty nine cents. From library assistant night to library assistants, reference library assistant, ten thousand and three thousand, the difference. Both have been recommended to be adopted, so it'd be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maria Pagán did join the Finance Committee uh last last week. And explained to us that the these essentially, the lib- reference library assistants are the same positions with the same people. With one difference, uh they're paid per diem, they're paid by the hours that they work. Some are part-time, I think there might be one that comes with with uh over thirty hours and get close to uh full-time. But it's still an hourly uh hourly salary. Um what Maria explained to us is that the difference in each of these line items in her budget, in the city budget. Is the refer- reference library assistant at night is paid a differently hourly wage for working at night. Now, sometimes a person will actually work hours during the, during a normal daytime hours and then cover the nighttime shift itself. And the the shift will come when they changed over to the nighttime hours. So what's going on is right now, the library is not open at all to the public. However, they are working with people online, they are working with people to uh, not just virtually, but they come in to pick up things. Uh so the all the library, reference library assistants are working during the day. There is more hours during the day because nothing is happening at night. And she's just asking to transfer the monies from one line item into another line item to pay these these individuals as they go. Uh she assured us that she will have no problems making it through the rest of the year in uh both line items, just in case. As the vaccine gets uh distributed, that she may be able to go back, but she has, right now, she does not foresee herself. Or the library going back to nighttime hours or public hours between now and the end of the fiscal year. So the the Finance Committee recommended unanimously that we adopt the transfer.
Counselor Lisi.
Uh thank you, I just want to make a really brief point, uh just a a point of clarification, really. The library is not open to the public, but there is a lot of um service happening. Um the public is being serviced by the library, either through programming that's happening virtually. Or um they are allowing people to check out books through the online um, you know, checking system. Um and then books are being made available for um curbside pickup. Um so I I think it's important to un- understand that um despite the building being closed, there's a lot of service being provided. And um for folks that may not have known that those services are out there and available, uh it's a good reminder that um books can still be checked out online. And they pretty, they have a very active um social media presence these days. Um so they're highlighting books and and really highlighting a lot of the programmings and making them widely available to to the citizens of our city. Thank you.
Anyone further?
That's what I call the curbside pickup, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Lisi.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for both A and B.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait, you vote you approved A and B. C, the committee on finances referred an order that the department has over five percent. That uh that a department that has over five percent of unrecognized uh grant funds resulting in a reduction of free cash to city. Will be subject to any legal remedy to return the same amount of funds to the city within the next fiscal year. Have considered the same recommend that's been complied with with a copy to the legal department.
To receive the committee report and adopt.
Motion is receive and adopt by our discussion.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Bacon filed this order. And I it goes uh hand in hand with the earlier discussion tonight about the issues that we're facing. Uh with grants being in deficit at the end of the fiscal year and that carrying over into having an impact on our free cash. Because the deficit, you know, actually makes free cash not free. So it's 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 obviously, it's it's a very important uh um issue. Um Counselor Bacon, I, order I think speaks for itself. And we're just asking that if this continues, that there will be remedies to uh to take place with the uh. Uh with the individuals who manage the grants, not the individuals, but with the departments and the budget. For which the uh managers of the grants are uh connected to. So I think it's an important order and language that we understand that across the board, that we will take the steps necessary.
Alright, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I just want to thank the committee for their support for this order. Um and it's really just to ensure the people that we represent, that their monies are being. Carefully watched and that we're being good stewards of their hard-earned dollars. Thank you.
Alright, so motion.
President, if I could.
Counselor McGivern.
I, there there was one amendment and I believe the maker of the order was in agreement with it. And I got, sorry, I got a little bit confused. The um the amendment was instead of a one hundred thousand dollar threshold. And and someone correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about a five percent threshold, which is pretty tight.
Yes. Yep, you're correct.
I have, I have, her original order was that the to- department that has over a hundred thousand, I'm un- unrecognizable. And now it says uh has over five percent.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't say that in my report.
Yes, and if if I may through the chair?
Yeah, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I was happy to support that amendment by the committee because in discussion. Uh which is why it's so important to have these discussions. It really was pointed out that some departments receive hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants. While others own, might receive tens of thousands. And so um it was a fair representation to use a percentage. Thank you.
So the motion is that this has been complied with with a copy to the legal department. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is the committee on finances referred an order that the city council create a revolving fund to be set up. For the city municipal ride share funding received by the state through the transportation network company. See attached, uh have considered, recommended that the order been adopted and refer to ordinance.
Make a motion, receive, refer to committee on ordinance.
Motion is receive and refer to ordinance. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Uh revolving funds have to be set by ordinance. The uh Finance Committee had a good discussion about this. We had our city engineer in, gave us some background of monies that have been coming in. Uh through the uh, you know, through the ride share itself. Um not significant, but it's nice to know that there is monies being generated, revenue being generated for the city. Fiscal year nineteen, we had a little over sixteen thousand dollars. Uh fiscal year eighteen, it was only twelve thousand and going back to when it started in fiscal year seventeen, it was a little under eight thousand. Um we think the the importance of a revolving fund is that these monies have to be used in a certain way. So in consultation with the auditor and consultation with the engineer, we believe that it would be a good revolving fund to uh. To utilize the tracking of the monies and to earmark them for what they can be used for.
Well, the motion is to receive and refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Off to Public Safety, seventeen A, the committee on public safety who was referred. An order constituents have brought to my attention the dangerous speed in vehicles traveling when taking a left on the Hampden Street coming from Lincoln. And a stop sign for pedestrian walkway be installed preferably with lights in the middle to create a sense of urgency. And slowing down the main constituent choosing the crosswalk to get one of the bigger shopping centers in the area stop and shop. Recommended has been complied with. Our discussion, Counselor Murphy.
Make motion that committee report for receiving adopted.
Motion is receive and adopt.
This is an order by Counselor Hernandez and Counselor Graney. Uh we did meet with the DPW, this superintendent, the city engineer. As well as the fire chief. Uh they all agreed that there are uh safety concerns at Hampden and Lincoln. Uh the good news is that the crossing is scheduled for installation of a pedestrian activated rapid flashing beacon. Sometime this year. Uh originally, it was scheduled to get state funding for all of it. But it was more expensive than they thought, but the state will fund most of the hardware uh through the complete streets. Complete streets grant. Uh and the DPW and the fire department signal division uh is gonna team up to install it. And they expect that the completion of this project should be sometime in the early spring.
Any questions for Counselor Murphy? Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I just want to thank all the hard work that Counselor Murphy um and the committee. Um dedicated to this and such a rapid turnaround too. And I apologize that I wasn't in the last meeting. I had um Comcast um, you know, outage in this area. But I want to thank you very much, and Counselor, and um your committee for getting this done. The constituents um are gonna be super happy in that area. Thank you so much.
Yeah, more so.
So motion that this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventeen B, the committee on public safety who was referred an order. Study on the possibility of a single lane parking and a no parking zone near um. And or the shape turn uh on O'Connor Avenue to allow large uh emergency fire trucks DPW to obtain. Uh through clearance to get throughout all times, recommended that the order's been complied with. Counselor Murphy, it would be motions, receive, adopt.
Uh, again, this is ordered by Counselor Hernandez. Uh we did have the DPW, the city engineer superintendent and the fire chief. Again, were with us. Uh they did confirm that there are safety issues on the street. And specifically, and and very important, uh the inability of a fire department ladder truck. To be able to drive through O'Connor Avenue in uh, which creates a situation from a fire. Uh fighting and life-saving perspective to really cause a significant concern. They have recommended uh that parking on the curve on the inside or outside of the turn closest to White Street. Right now, that interferes with the fire department equipment, so they're. They realize there's parking issues there, Counselor. They realize there's parking issues there, Counselor Hernandez, but they're recommending. That parking be prohibited 50 feet in either direction from the midpoint. Of the outside curve and 30 feet in either direction from the midpoint of the inside of the curve. And basically, Counselor, you're gonna, I, I, obviously, I would suggest you talk to your constituents, make sure they're aware it's a fire, it's a safety issue. And you can work with the city engineer and the fire chief to make sure that whatever you do propose for ordinance can meet their standards. But also as minimal loss of parking for your, for your residents. But in order for safety, in order to get a fire ladder truck in there, which is both rescue and firefighting. Then the parking has to be more restrictive.
Counselor Hernandez, any questions or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I mean. I know that parking is restrictive already, you know, as it is in the street, but. Like what you said, Counselor Murphy, the most important thing here is safety. And if we needed to get a fire truck through there. And, you know, God forbid there's cars in the way and, you know, we can't compromise that. Talking about lives and, you know, the loss of parking spaces, so. I think at this point, it's going to have to be safety first and whatever is decided. So, so I'm a little bit confused. So now that, is this going to be complied with or is still going to be looked into? To see how many spots are going to be eliminated?
Well, the order is complied with, but the city engineer is that you meet with him on, on the street. He will kind of work with you to draw up the ordinance language. Which will then have to be filed and sent to ordinance committee so we can draw it into legal. But he would, he would definitely sit down with you and go over the specifics and draw up. This was a summary of their report. Obviously, I didn't provide you with an engineer report, but. You know, they're, they're, they, they thought there'd probably be four to five lost parking spots. Could be three on one side and two on the other, but that was an estimate, so. You know, if you go there with the city engineer, I'm sure he'll be able to figure that out. And again, you know, you might just want to have the fire chief there when you're doing it, just to make sure he's all set. But they, they all indicated they really think this needs to get done.
Okay, and do I reach out to coordinate a meeting with the city engineer and the fire department?
Yes.
To meet them there? Okay.
Yeah, they would, they would, whenever you're ready, they would like to meet with you on that. As long as you're okay with it, they would like to meet with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Agree. Thank you so much.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would just suggest, I, I think Counselor Murphy and Counselor Hernandez. Next steps are, are correct. But to expedite because it is a safety issue and, you know, we all know parking is the premium on this street. Because it is a safety issue that we, we could have someone file a late file order and get it into ordinance. So once the engineer and everybody's ready, you can get the ordinance committee going.
Um, do we, oh, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Go ahead, Counselor Hernandez.
Okay, so do one of us do it right now?
Yeah, if you can do it, Counselor Hernandez.
So Counselor McGivern, just so. I drafted correctly, what do you want the late file to be?
Yeah, no parking be created on the curve, the S curve of O'Connor Avenue. I'll leave it, leave it blank so that the engineer and, and Counselor Hernandez can figure out exactly, you know. How, how far the no parking will reach.
Alright, I have that. And I'll file that for you, Counselor Hernandez.
Oh, thank you so much.
As long as you say so, I'm not going to tell you what.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Alright, so that, that is done. Anything else on this? Hearing none, motion is that's been complied with? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Alright, last one is C, the Committee on Public Safety was referred. In order that the committee review the status of dangerous buildings, provide, provide the city council with a report of all buildings marked with a red X. Including ownership and if there are plans for the oldest buildings in the near future, also the possibility and estimate. Of what would be a cost to demolish these buildings, recommend that the order's been complied with. Counselor Murphy?
Again, we met with the fire chief and we got, we got a list of, from the fire chief. And I also got a list from the building commissioner of buildings that were red X, but also are on the, on the. We now call it the property preservation group, not the problem property group, but. The fire chief indicated that there are approximately 25 buildings with red X's right now. Of which 19 of those are on the, and I'm still going to call it the problem property group because that's. For, for actually comfortable for me right now. Some of them go back as far as 1996. So we've had, we've been looking at these buildings, trying to verify, you know, are we going to do something with these? Are we going to make them safer? Are we going to take them down? I, I think the listing, you know, we got 1996, we got two, 1998, 1996. 2006, 2004. I mean, we got things that are 10, 12, 15, 21 years, 25 years. That are on our list, so, I mean, I think the, the committee report. We've talked about, you know, the need to do some financing to get more of these things done in a quicker pace. Which I, I personally think both from a safety perspective, but also from an economic development perspective. And from a neighborhood quality perspective, all would play a role. I mean, clearly, we think that we need to be more aggressive in terms of removing these. And, you know, we talked about trying to create. And we didn't, we didn't establish a timeline, but, I mean, if we've got something in the problem property group for five to seven years. And we're not, we know we don't have someone coming in to renovate, we don't have money to fix it up. You know, we need to move on though. We just cannot have things sitting there with a red X for 25 years. And say come to invest in Hoyok. Or, or come to live in this neighborhood because, you know, it doesn't look good. It's not good for economic development and it's certainly not good for safety and, and neighborhood quality. So that's basically what we did. You know, it's. We've got one or two of them that were removed in the last year and a half. But we need to move faster on these. I know monies, we got money issues, but we also got safety issues and we got neighborhood quality issues, so. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern, your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add on to Counselor Murphy's report, which is always spot on. Couple of things that we were reminded by Chief Presskowalski. Is, well, one good thing was is that the list Counselor Murphy just referred to was mu- much larger, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And for different reasons, some good, some bad, that list has, has diminished over, over the years. But, but the chief reminded us, you know, what, what the X is about too is. And I remember one time when I, I agree with Counselor Murphy, you know, seeing those X's just sends us such a negative. Message to economic development, to neighborhoods and to a lot of reasons. But Jeff reminded us, what, what the X is really about is not that these buildings are condemned. Not that these buildings should be demolished necessarily. But it's how they fight a fire, when they have to especially fight a fire if necessary from the inside out. Also, how they rescue when they first get to a, a fire call. The, a one engine is, is assigned to if there is necessary, any rescues that need to take place. Meaning any tenant or anybody caught on the inside that need to be getting out. Or not even knowing that there's a fire to get them out of the building. So the red X tells the firefighter that this building has, you know, issues that could be. And they keep a lot of data on each of these buildings that could be a problem, send firefighters in the building itself. So I, I think, you know, Counselor, the, the chief, Counselor Murphy's order is very important. And I think also the chief's presentation reminds us of what firefighters deal with and the X is there for, for a reason. But thank you and I do appreciate Counselor Murphy's order.
And just make one more comment.
Sure, Counselor Murphy.
Just because it, it's kind of, we did get a report from Damian Cody about the 25 worst buildings and, and that. Going on the basis of the top of the list, the very, the first four on that, on that list are all red X buildings. And, and three of them have been red X buildings, two of them have been red X buildings for more than 15 years. Some more than 20 years. And there is some estimate in terms of demolition, so the top three. The estimate in terms of demolition, if that's what our option would be about. Eight, eight hundred thousand, that's, I mean, we, we guess a major expense we have to have if we're going to clear these up. Yeah, just an example of the red X's. They're danger for firefighters. And the other thing that chief made a point about was people then trying to. Move into some of the buildings with red X's and now the firefighters, they know someone's in there, they're. Even though the red X says, don't be going in, if it's life saving, they're going in. So you're putting firefighters in greater jeopardy as well, so. I mean, again, we need, we need to work to resolve it. I mean, there's no easy way to do it. But at some point, we just got to say, we got to bite the bullet and say, okay, let's, let's get it done. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, and I would just like to remind everyone in the council, once again, this is probably a half a dozen times now. This issue has come up. We have sent a request to the mayor's office to come to us with a proposal. For a combination of bonding, use of stabilisation funds, use of other funds. To begin a program of really addressing this issue. We, we, I believe what we asked for was in the neighborhood of $2 million, just to get a start on this. Still no response at all whatsoever from room one. But yet we'll see later tonight, a request for use of stabilisation for a piece of equipment.
Seeing no one further, motion that this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's no public service, no DGNR, no charter rules, no joint committees, so we're on to motions, orders and resolution. The first one is from Counselor McGivern. Order that the city council create an ordinance for revolving fund for marijuana impact fees.
Make a motion to receive your part of committee on ordinance, please.
Well, this is the center ordinance, Counselor Bartley.
Yes. I, I, I'm not going to go through the chair, but, but this, I, I assume this is filed on behalf of somebody. But I, 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 because I'd love to hear that, if you could, Joe, if you don't mind going through the chair.
Mr. President, is that, okay?
Counselor McGivern?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Counselor Bartley, it was actually, it was brought to my attention. From the, our new director of OPED, that impact fee and from our auditor. That marijuana impact fees, the ones that we're, we're speaking about, can only be used for specific purposes. There, there's a lot more to the discussion, which I think we should say for committee. But the idea of the revolving fund was mine. Because the, the fact that we need to account for the money that comes in. And we can only use it for certain things is important because when outside audits take place, we need to be able to show. How we use the impact fees themselves. Now, I, I have a little bit more creativity and I think Counselor Murphy's suggestions along the, the past two, couple of years. About how to set up some funding to do certain things can be worked into this. However, there is a specific language in the state law and, and a lot of municipalities are finding out that it's. It's very restrictive and some municipalities are doing away with the impact fees and looking for getting help, revenue help. From the, the industry in a different way. But I think it's important, we have a very big, very sound discussion on this. And if we were going to go forward with the fees, that we can spell out how they're going to be used in Hoyok.
Yeah, just while I have the floor. So I, I, I appreciate that. I, I. I had a feeling that was the case, and I'll give my reasons for a sec, in a second, but. The, it, it would be nice if it, when, when counselors do file orders on behalf of, of somebody like that, if they would. If they would disclose it, so we have some kind of an understanding as to the, the rationale. But I, I only say that and I say it respectfully because the, and I really do say respectfully because the maker of this order has. I don't know how many times, but is more than a handful. Argued on this very floor, opposing. For the creation of revolving funds. And, and that's something that Counselor President and I were instrumental in getting, getting revolving fund for, for recycling. And, and so we're, we're pretty proud of that. And as a result, we were able to purchase hundreds and hundreds of recycling, recycling, but they're now gone. But dispersed throughout the city, but that's something very important. So we use recycling revenue to procure more recycling. Bins, but I can, but, you know, I, 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 I thought it was at the time a logical thing. But the argument, and again respectfully, was it impacts. It, 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 it impacts how DLR looks at, at the city of Hoyok overall, and I get it. Now, so I'm, I'm hopeful, Mr. President, that, that this discussion, now even though it's on behalf of the OPED director. I, I'm hopeful that we'll have a, a pretty specific detailed reason as to why. And furthermore, what impact, if we do create this revolving fund, what impact would it have on the city of Hoyok in terms of the department of revenue? So that, that can't be forsaken and it can't be forgotten either, so let's, please keep that in mind. But I, I know we'll discuss it in finance, but when I saw this order and the maker of it, I was, I was perplexed, but now I know and. We'll discuss it in finance. Thank you.
Alright, so 23, I have it as 23 is to go to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye, Mr. President, if I could just quickly respond to that.
Counselor McGivern, sorry.
I know the motion is go to committee, but Counselor Bartley is, is very correct. I have and will continue to spoke, speak against revolving funds for, for no reason unless there's good reason. I think in committee, we will find out that there's good reason here, or at least there's a necessary reason here for, for the. For being able to pinpoint these monies when they come in. I did vote in favor of the recycling after I spoke against recycling revolving funds for the recycling. And if you remember, we had a good compromise that makes sense, that we kept that revolving fund at dollar X. And it's been used, been used great because I see a lot of my neighbors who have taken advantage of it. And down and got, went down and got their top bin. But thank you, Counselor Bartley. I do, you're absolutely right. And I think the reasons will be found out in committee in more detail.
Thank you, Joe. Look forward to it.
Going to ordinance or finance?
Ordinance.
Revolving funds have to be done by ordinance.
I thought you said finance earlier, so, so thank you, Counselor Murphy catching that. So this is going to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here we go. Make sure it goes the right committee.
Mr. President, if I can make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yep.
To take up items 23, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32 and 33 as a package.
Counselor McGivern? If you want to, just give me that list again so I make sure I have it all in order. Because what I have on my agenda isn't lining up with what I have for yours, so I'm just making sure we have all of them correctly.
It's 23 through 33, with the exception, keep out 24 and 25.
24 and 25, okay. 24. 25, so 25 and 26, okay. So 23, 27, 29, 30, 32, 33, 34. To take up as a package. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question first before we?
Counselor Sullivan, go ahead.
To the chair, to Counselor McGivern. Joe, so if, if we send these all, every one of these is out of stabilisation?
Uh, no. There's a lot of things here. There's a, there's a grant.
Number 26, the grant.
There's some money from real estate transactions. And there's, some, a lot of it is stabilisation, but yeah.
I'll read them all.
I, I just let me, let me ask the questions. Counselor McGivern, so all, all of these are going to come out of, go to the committee and then. As I understand it, we have no other option but to discuss taking them out of stabilisation with no other option available?
No, we have plenty, we have plenty of options when in committee. We can reject it and suggest it comes from somewhere else.
Okay.
Discussion is both where it comes from, but more and equally important where it's going and why.
Yeah, I, I think that kind of speaks for themselves here, but we're, shouldn't we be seeing another option right out of the starting gate in the, in the?
You're speaking to the wrong person. I remind everybody when my name or the chairman of finances name is on these orders. It's to replace the mayor's inability to file something in front of us. the mayor's inability to file something in front of us. These are coming from Mayor Mars, okay? I'm, you know, out of courtesy, we always file them under the chairman of the finances, uh, name itself in order for discussion purposes.
So would we, would we be better off just, uh, giving the ones out of stabilization leave to withdraw, sending them?
Absolutely not. There's a big need in each of these, and I think this discussion should take place in committee, so the president.
Yeah, so hold on, so can, answer counselor Sullivan. And this happened to me in my early tenure on finance, there was, I think it was back with Mike Sullivan, he, he was doing bonds and it was like fourteen million dollars, and the article I woke up in the morning said, McGee wants to spend fourteen million dollars in bonding. I thought, what? We filed it under the chair's name. That's what the process is, and then we receive it as it's filed by the maker, which in this case is the mayor. The mayor's requesting this, they're just putting Joe's name there or counselor McGivern's name there as a formality through the process.
I, I.
If he does, if he doesn't offer up any other options, we can vote these down and move forward, but in essence, we still have to take them up in committee to address them. Whether we like, you know, if we like them, don't like them, offer up better suggestions.
I agree, but just, just for the sake of expediting them and getting them in front of the committee and moving them from the committee in a timely fashion. I, I don't think putting them before us right out of the starting gate with only that one option is a, uh, wise move on the mayor's part, and they, it, it shouldn't come to this, us this way.
Alright, you, you could make a motion to give leave to withdraw, and then there would be a vote on it. But with that, counselor Bartley has his hands up. Counselor Bartley?
Uh, no, I, 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 well, there you go, I, I, I appreciate that. So that's kinda where, so first of all, th- this, first of all, we're, we're suspending the rules to put them as a package, where, where we've got, you know, we're, we're mixing all sorts of different orders here, so I, I for one would rather not do it that way. I for one, where that's, we can take, you know, the, the innocuous ones, twenty-three, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And I guess thirty-three. Um, I, I, I'd be okay to, to package those up, send them right off to finance, but I'll, I'm re- I'm ready to take a vote in the stable adjacent ones right now, so I, I'd rather, I'd rather not do that. And by the way, w- w- by the way, we, we do not, we are not compelled through this chair to, 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 to counselor Sullivan, we are not compelled to send these anywhere. There is, so, so let me, let me clarify that point i- if I, if I, if I may. Um, we, we, we take a vote to do whatever we wanna do, so if you wanna, if you wanna, uh, pass it right now, if you wanna send it to committee right now, or if you wanna give it leave to a draw. I for one am, am in Mike Sullivan's camp on this, because I think these are, um, ill-advised, and I think they're just gonna cause delay. But that's me, so I, I, I'd ra- I'd rather, I'd rather knock him out of the box right this second, have him come back with something realistic. Thank you.
Can I, can I make one more comment, Todd?
Y- yeah, I, I, I'm sorry I lost you guys, my, my internet went down, so I missed some of that, so I'm, I'm just getting back.
Not good.
I'm, I, I, I don't want anybody to misunderstand, I'm, I'm very, very much in favor of, of getting some financing, getting some new equipment for the DPW, getting this new, um, truck for the, uh, alarm division uh, of the fire department, very much for it. I don't wanna see it come to committee in a, a form that I feel is dead on arrival right out of the starting gate, that it oughta come to us in a form where we, with at least the options and the, and the way we can go about addressing it in a financially responsible way.
Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. With, with, with all due respect, I, I expect, I know we're gonna have this discussion in committee, I know we're gonna have discussion probably when it comes out of committee, and I fully respect that, and I understand, and I think it's gonna be on a case by case for each of these orders that are coming from stabilization. But we can't get to that discussion until we find out what, there's, there's two sides to any transfer. One side is where it's going, which I think is usually what we focus on, and there is certainly a need here. Every one of us has been getting the phone calls when recycling or trash is not picked up in a timely fashion, and some recycling's been put off, which is picked up every two weeks for, in some neighborhoods for another two weeks, which means there's people have had recycling not picked up for four weeks. We need to get the DPW in and to get this discussion going. Um, whether it's gonna be stabilization or not, that's the mayor's proposal, that's the mayor's prerogative at this time. We can shoot down just by, for the mayor reason where the money is coming from. But I'll remind everybody that there is no free cash left, you, there's no free cash, period. Matter of fact, there's a new free cash coming out that went negative, not just, uh, zeroed out. There's also a, a email from our, our financial, uh, advisor from Cinder McNary that outlines some things that are going on with proposals for the middle school itself, and, and whether there'll be bonding, you know, bonding, um, availability, if, if we choose to go through the middle school process and bond for that. We, we, as a reminder, everyone, that the, that the, uh, the last bonding for the middle schools was a, was revenue, oh, I'm sorry, was a, uh, initiative on the ballot, which was shot down by the residents of Hoyok to, uh, to increase the, uh, their taxes for the purpose of paying for those bonds. So there's a lot going on here that needs a discussion, and the finance committee is a good place to have it. The rea- the reason I made this as a package tonight is to get it into committee because, you know, we should be debating whether or not we want the committee to, uh, to debate this. And I, and I think it's worthy of a debate. I've already talked to Jeff, we have the twenty-fourth penciled off as the finance committee that can initiate this discussion. We have time to do it, but I think they're very important issues, and I ask everyone just to get them as a package into the committee. And if it doesn't work out, we can look for other options under discussion perfectly within our rules. And we can always, in sometimes a very timely fashion, if everybody agrees to other options, including the mayor, because we can initiate them ourselves, we can get them back in front of us for the next full city council meeting coming after the committee debates it. But I, I think having this debate on the floor now, I understand it's important, I'm not disagreeing with the debate, but let's get everything into committee so we can get it going.
Counselor Sullivan? Your hands still up?
Mr. President, he's spoken twice now on the motion to go to committee.
Well, I, I dropped off, I, I told you I dropped off, so I missed some.
I know, that's why I'm reminding you.
Got it, got it.
As you're, while you were gone, I had to take over.
Yeah, I'm having a serious internet issue here, but his hands down, alright, so just so we go through it, the first motion was to take up twenty-three to thirty-three, taking out twenty-four and twenty-five as a package, so we're suspending the rules to do that. All those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, twenty-three. The eyes would have it. Uh, twenty-three, the committee on finance to invite in Tanya Campbell and Melanzen Heath to discuss the twenty-twenty certification of free cash. Twenty-six is the neighborhood, uh, hub program hundred thousand dollar grant. Twenty-seven is the mass DEP small scale grant. Twenty-eight is two hundred and twenty thousand from, uh, sale of real estate to trash capital outlay motor. Twenty-nine is three hundred and thirty thousand from sale of real estate and stabilization to trash capital outlay vehicles. Thirty is three hundred and thirty thousand from stabilization to, uh, trash capital A vehicles. And thirty-one is a hundred thousand from stabilization for snow removal. Thirty-two is a hundred and sixty thousand from stabilization to fire department capital outlay vehicles. And in thirty-three is thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from contract forest services waste recycling to forest vehicle lease. All those to finance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
All those? Let me go back to twenty-four and twenty-five. I'm assuming we're taking up twenty-four and twenty-five.
Twenty-five as a package for the president for adoption?
So suspend, suspend rules to take those up as a package, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Twenty-four is four thousand five hundred eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents from firefighter lieutenant to injured on duty. Twenty-five is, uh, twelve thousand five forty, thirty-one cents from sergeant, lieutenants and pa- uh, patrolmen to injured on duty. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion, counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Uh, this is something we see almost every meeting. And, uh, these are individuals in both the police and fire department who, for a period of time, some very short, that were injured on duty, were taken, the money comes out of the salary line item and into the injured on duty line item for purpose of tracking the money in, in, for a number of different reasons. The president, I don't have the second half of these orders, if you could tell us how many people this affects, most of them are short term.
Yep, so the first one's for fire, it's three. And for police, it's five. Any questions? So motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for both transfers.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Greeny?
Yes.
Hernandez? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your voter approved those two. Next is from counselor Murphy, I am thirty-four, order that the superintendent of DPW appear before DG and R committee to try and develop a better communication system notifying residents that their commit, uh, their trash recycling won't be picked up because of a snowstorm. In addition, the discussion should include trying a way to get back to pick up those residents within a short time period when considering recycling pickup or canceling rather than postponement means they have almost one month material to store. Would this be an area which would ROKA might be able to quickly recover those items from a storm? Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I'm gonna make.
Add to that, counselor Murphy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I certainly wanted to go to DGR, but I'm hoping maybe, uh, I tried to call the DPW yesterday, I've got residents having concerns, uh, and some residents got their recycling picked up, the, the trash got picked up, but recycling has not been picked up in some of my, of my wards. This would be four weeks, and it didn't get picked up again today. Uh, and I tried to find out, should people leave it out? Two weeks ago, they left it out and it, and it never got picked up. And then it gets blown around in other parts of the city, uh, and then, uh, today, some got picked up, so I suggested that people leave it out, and I tried to find out, but I went to the phone call, I called, and they just told me to go to the website, the website says be aware that we're having problems with, with trash and recycling, but we need to be able to give people information when they could expect to have that resolved, and I know ROKA, we try to provide some job opportunities and some training, I'm wondering if maybe if, if it's a, a situation in terms of staffing, I know we got vehicle issues as well, uh, but if maybe we could have some of the vehicles working later with people with ROKA uh, and, and, and have some training that would then maybe help them, but also provide the service that constituents are waiting for. Right now, I know there are, there's a lot of recycling out there, I don't know if it's gonna be, be picked up tomorrow, and if it's not picked up tomorrow, then those constituents are six weeks without their recycling being picked up. And I know some people said, well, bring it down to, to the barn and everything, but there are people that don't have the ability to bring it down to the barn. So, I mean, we need to provide that service, and we need to figure out a way to communicate when we're gonna do it. And obviously, we need to make sure we have a staff that, that has the ability to follow up and doing it. Uh, I don't have the answer, but I know what we're doing right now is not working.
Counselor Bacon, adding you on, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, so counselor Hernandez?
Hello?
Yeah. Counselor Hernandez? A little bit, it's kinda low.
Hello?
Yeah, I can, can hear ya.
Okay, so can, with the?
You're not coming through, Gladys.
I can't hear, uh, Todd.
Yeah, she broke up there. You wanna be added on, counselor Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, adding counselor Hernandez as well. Then counselor Bartley?
Yes, please, uh, yeah, I just wanna add my name, but I just wanna make a quick comment, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, I, 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 I look forward to, I, I'm not gonna take this up next week. Uh, but I'll, I'll take it up in, uh, March, cause we already have, we already have our, uh, I don't have my agenda set for next Monday, but I'm, I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow with, with, uh, with Jeff, but I, um, so I, I know there's several orders coming, but I, I just, I'm just not gonna be able to, uh, so I just, just wanna make it known. So the orders I, I have in there were, you know, la- last time we had a four and a half hour, and I, and we, we just, we can't, that, that, that can't ca- ca- continue to happen. And, uh, so we're, we're just gonna sort of temper the, uh, temper the schedule as best we can, and we have it set for uh, one meeting for, uh, February, March, April, and we, we may have two in June, but, but that's, that's it. So I just wanna say that, say that publicly, okay? Thank you.
Ca- counselor Hernandez, are you back, or?
In our area, just so you guys know, we're having, she lives up the street from me at the corner, and we're having a lot of trouble with our internet, um, services. So we're normally, they lose it all, or, or i- i- it freezes for a while.
Yeah, I crashed, I crashed once already tonight, so.
She's having trouble on the other end, yeah.
Alright, so counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just a friendly suggestion, and if not, that's okay, but the, uh, this goes a little bit hand in hand with some of the, uh, the financial transfers that are before the finance committee. We'll be having discussion on money to, to, uh, to buy some equipment that is necessary, and part of the problem with recycling is the recycling vehicles themselves, part of it is manpower. But if with, you know, with the chairman of, uh, DGR, with the maker of the order, we might wanna have, you know, just add this discussion in the finance committee with the, uh, with the transfers that are before us, so we can get it all in one discussion next week.
Hold on, counselor Greeney, counselor Murphy?
I'd be fine if it went to finance, if counselor Bartley's okay with that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So counselor Greeney?
Just a quick point of information, that room one knows about this issue because on the last robo-call on the storm, the mayor mentioned that the recycling would be twenty-four hours later for the residents of Hoyok, so they know about it in the city hall, it's a question of getting it done.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, counselor Murphy, if I could be added on to this order? Appreciate it. Um, just real briefly, I, I spoke to Mike McManus, uh, the last storm, it was, uh, I think it was about four weeks ago, when the people up in, uh, up in my area didn't get their trash, their recycling picked up. And, um, so it's been at least four weeks, hopefully we'll get it tomorrow with the holiday, but um, he, he mentioned it was a storm and, um, lack of manpower and basically the vehicles, so that's, uh, I'm glad it's going to finance, have this discussion. Um, and I, I did tell him that we, there's gotta be a better way to get this out to people, because I've had neighbors up here, uh, up on Bemis Road that they left it out for, you know, three weeks, and the stuff flies around when it's windy. Uh, the stuff goes all over the neighborhood, and that's not good either. So a lot of people don't know, they just don't wanna bring it in, they figure it's gonna happen, uh, the next week. And Mike stated, you can't really do that, cause it throws the whole schedule off. So it has to be like two weeks later, so if you miss two weeks, then you got, like you said, four weeks, some people, six weeks worth of recycling, and, um, and not everybody can bring the stuff down. I was able to take mine and my neighbor's down there, uh, about a month ago, but not everybody can do that, they don't have the means to bring it down to the, uh, the, the DPW yard, so. But, um, hopefully, uh, we can get a little better instruction out to the residents on, on what to do, um, and instead of people leaving their recycling out for, for two more weeks. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez, you back?
I, I think so. Yeah, now, do you guys hear me better?
Yeah, perfect.
So, um, yeah, I just wanted to be, um, with the, I couldn't hear back from you guys, but with the permission of the, um, maker of the order, I wanted to be added, because, um, I know, I'm not sure Gladys, if you're having the same trouble, but, um, in your ward, but
Yep. Yep.
We are having, you know, tremendous amounts of issues with. Um, there's a lot of confusion amongst all the community, um, residents as to. What to do? They take it out, bring it in, take it back out, it's flying all over the place. I know that there's. Issues of manpower, also vehicles down, storm, pandemic and all of this, but. We have to, you know, there was a point when we didn't even have the calendars for the recycling printed out and we were all confused. On the matter and I think that there has to be, um. That this, we have to work together to make it right for all of our residents. There was people talking about taking their recycle to East Hampton. I mean, because the hours were more extended in East Hampton. And by the time that they got out of work, that's completely unacceptable. Like, we have to. Do something that's going to provide this service for the people and, and. I know that we're lucky because I know that in other places we, they have to pay for the recycle. But yes, please, um, would like to see what can we do to improve this. Thank you so much.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I'd like to speak to it when you get it.
Okay. So everybody said what's on my mind, so if it's okay with the maker, I'd like to be added as well, please.
Absolutely.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
Same here, cuz I think this is an issue that has touched us, all of us already, but I think it was also important for us when we get a chance to. I understand there's a lot of people down. I know many other people that work there of the community that are working. W and they're down. We need to figure out how, when something like this happens, that we can provide the support to these departments. I don't think it's a, a finger pointing, but at the same time, we look like, um. Unknowledgeable people when a, a resident asks us what's going on and I, I, I can't even tell them what is going on yet until I really follow up the issue. And I've had several people who are, are disabled in my street that bring out their stuff and then they gotta go back and figure out how to bring it back. We've had to, I've had to help some, um, and even in my own personal household that we take everything out and I gotta bring it back because they've. Broken, you know, animals break the bags and there's a big mess, so now it's now causing litter in our streets, it's causing all the issues, so. I think it's not a finger pointing, but how can we best support DPW because I think they get pulled for many directions, not only the cleaning, the snow. Issues and they're, they're down, I mean. I know there's a union kinda consideration, um, department, but maybe. Getting, um, people from temp agencies while these other people are down to replace them for the meantime. Not taking over their positions, but showing that there at least a backup. There's gotta be a, a way that we gotta think about it in any department. We shouldn't be saying. Oh, you can't get that type of service because they're down. That's not, that's not the taxpayers' problem. That's. Our problem to figure out, and I think that we need to kinda figure this out and really discuss further than saying we need the timing. At least also notifying us, as the City Council's saying, in your ward, it may be late. That then we can put something out. I, you know, we posted on Facebook, we'll do whatever needs to be on our end. So we don't look like we know nothing. Sometimes it's, they've taken me by surprise. I don't know what to tell them. Oh, you mean you haven't been picked up for weeks? Oh, I didn't know that. You know, those are things that I learned last minute, then when I called, they're telling me that they're down by so many people. But what do we tell people? Well, that means they're not getting, getting trash until six months later because the people are out. You know, with all respect, people deserve to be out if they're sick and whatnot, but let's figure out a, 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 a. A method, not just a discussion about the times that this is gonna be picked up. What happens when this doesn't happen? That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Alright, Counselor Grady, do you still have your hand up or? No? Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I just, and I agree with what everybody's, and I'm not trying to point fingers here, but we. I mean, when you're, when you're managing something, you need to have a plan for when things don't go well. Uh, and that plan has to continue to provide what you need to provide, and this is a service that needs to be provided. Uh, and again, I think, uh, Counsel LeBron Martinez made an interesting suggestion about temporary hires. Maybe that can work. I think Roka maybe can work, but we need to put a plan together and we need to be able to tell residents. This is the plan. If you don't get picked up because of a snowstorm, we're gonna try to get to you or we're gonna get to you. Uh, late in the next day or whatever the case might be. So they know they can put it back out the next day and it's gonna be picked up. Uh, cuz I also know there are people that don't put it back out and then someone comes by and picks it up, but they didn't know it. And now they're stuck. So we, I mean, we need to do all those things. Communicate, we need to get a sta- enough of a staff that we can do all the other things and still. Provide the services that were essential, and I know we need new equipment. So all those things play a role. I'm glad it's gonna go and we'll, we'll take it up and finance, that's fine. Uh, but we've gotta come to a better solution so that we get into next winter, uh. And hopefully not get, get through this winter without too many more problems, but get into next winter that we don't have this problem continuing. Thank you.
So this is gonna go to Finance. All those in favor? All opposed? Next is from Counsel Murphy. Order that the Public Safety Committee meet with the Principal of Hoyok High School, the Receiver, the Mayor and. Police Chief and Vice Chair of the School Committee to discuss concerns about material being promoted within the high school. Which seems to only further alienate the community from the Police Department. As an example of things to do, instead of calling the cops, is don't feel obligated to defend. Uh, property, especially corporate private property before confronting someone or contacting the police. Ask yourself if anyone is being hurt or endangered property or theft. If the answer is no, let it be. The goal is in order, uh, is to build a greater understanding and respect between the Police Department and the community.
I'm gonna make a motion to Senator the Public Safety and if I can just have a comment.
Yep, Counsel Murphy.
Uh, you know, obviously, there was some literature in, in. Early on, I was under the impression that this was actually some kind of program within the schools, but it appears it's just. Uh. Handouts that are somewhat being given in the school. At least that's what it appears now. But I, I do want it to go to Public Safety Committee and I would just table it until. If we get more information that there is some kind of program going on in the school. I mean, we need to work on. Community policing and working on building a community that has trust in the police and police and, and, and also, you know, just the. The very first point is the one I put on there. I mean, if we're gonna say that, you know, damaging property is something we should just ignore. Those are not messages I wanna send to the students at Hoyok High School or any other school or any other part of our citizenry, so, I mean, uh. I, there are parts of it that maybe I think can provide, uh, a person doing more and trying to, trying to help people. And I'm all for that, but we can't be teaming up one against the other. We gotta all be in this together. Uh, and, uh, so again, I just, I wanna send it to Public Safety. I won't take it up. I mean, I've talked to the chief. Uh, I know I haven't talked to the Principal yet, but I will, uh, and I won't take it up unless we really see this becoming. More, but these are handouts that are supposedly being given out by someone at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Grady, Counsel Bacon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I had originally filed an order on this matter and it was communicated to me that these had. Not been distributed in the school. However, in light of what Counselor Murphy is sharing with us tonight. I'd like to be added to this order because I withdrew it based on that. Information that I was provided, so if it actually was distributed in the school, then. I'm actually renewing my order. Thank you, with you.
Adding Counselor Bacon, Counselor Grady.
Um, uh, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to be added to this order. I have some serious reservations about what's going on as well.
Alright, adding Counsel Grady. So this would be sent to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Excuse me, can I say something?
Counselor LeBron Martinez, was that you?
Yeah, is, is there, who has any access to the whatever flyer article that was like going around that we get a copy just to know what is happening? I'd like to be informed about what is happening before we.
Jeffrey did send it around last week.
Oh, he did? I apologize then. Let me go to my stuff. Thank you.
Okay.
I mean, that's how I saw it, so.
Ca- Counselor Hernandez, your hands up?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I, so, can you re-? Can you, um, please, um, repeat what is this about? About this distribution again? And the issue that's going on?
So from what Counsel Murphy just says, that something is, he thought at first it might have been a. Something being taught in class, but now appears more to be a handout going throughout the school. So they're looking to see what that is and it's being referred to committee to get more information as to what it really is that's being passed out. In the schools. Is that right, Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and if I can, I'll just, the very top says twelve things to do instead of calling the cops. Uh, and then the very first thing is the part that I quoted in, in the, uh, in the order, cuz I thought, wow. Uh, I, I wanna call the police if someone's damaging someone's property, uh, but, uh, the. I had originally been under the impression that it was part of a school program. Now I've been told that it's not part of a school, but it's some. Handouts that people have brought home, parents have seen them. It, it may have nothing to do directly with the school other than being handed out by someone in the school and that I don't know. But I, I guess that I'm, I, I talked to the chief today on it, uh, to try to build up community and. Community policing and, and try to make sure the community is all in, set together. But I will table this un- until there's more information and obviously, if it is part of a school program. Uh, then we definitely need to sit down and talk.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so Counsel Bacon's hand is up, Counsel Grady? Just making sure. Alright, so with this, this will go to Public Safety. All those in favor? All opposed? Next, uh, number thirty-seven is from Counsel Murphy. Order that the DPW fix the paving on Ray Street near Sergeant Street, especially where. Handicap interest to the building is located. Uh, puddling poses a serious, uh, hazard to, uh, people trying to get into the business, so that would be receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Yes, with a copy.
Counsel Murphy? And copy to Public Safety. Okay, so, so receive, adopt, send to DPW or a copy to Public Safety. All those in favor? All opposed? Thirty-eight is from Counsel Sowen, Counsel Barling, Counsel Bacon. Order that the. Manager and appropriate staff member of HGNE be invited in the, uh, and to update the council on findings regarding municipal. Broadband projects related to costs and potential benefits and or risk, uh, sent to DGNR.
Second.
But some motions to send to DGNR. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Just once again, I, I'm starting to, the computer's freezing up again, so yell if I don't see your hand or something. Give the heads up. Next is from Counsel Anderson Burgos. Order that the City of Hoyok undertake a feasibility study to figure out how to transfer power lines to underground. The study should seek, uh, to understand the cost, the obstacles, potential cost savings, the impact on services. Uh, on the public safety and see what grants or other types of funding are available to limit the city cost of doing this. Counsel Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I'm just gonna touch on that, it, it, you know, a little bit. Um, so I'm, I'm a. Forward thinker. I'm thinking way into the future. I don't want you to think this is, uh, quick, let's do this now. Um, but I always think way ahead of the game. Um, I can't even count how many times people have lost power. Um, because of weather conditions, accidents, whatever. I, I just feel that, um. I want Hoyok to be the first. I want people to look around and say, wow, Hoyok's doing great things. This is for the future. And what I would love to see is, uh, this to be sent to DGNR, um, copy to Finance. Um, also, I want to invite. Senator Vellis, uh, Representative Duffy, um, and Jim Lovell. And see what we can do around state funding, you know, just get the conversation going. That's all, that's, I would love to see that happen. Thank you.
Alright, so this would be to DGNR. With a copy to Finance, copy to the State Delegation and a copy to HGNE.
That is correct, yep, and, uh, invite, uh, Senator Vellis and Rep Duffy to this. To these conver- uh, conversations since, you know, they have a stakeholder at the state and they can probably help.
Inviting in the delegation to the meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Grady, I see your hand up. Counselor Lisi?
Uh, I, I pushed a nine by mistake.
No, okay, no worries, no worries. Counselor Lisi?
Hey, uh, thanks. I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I believe I filed the same order, uh, about a month ago and it went to DGR. Uh, it's a little bit broader to say, let's talk about broadband and fiber. Let's talk about, uh, you know, climate change and, and the green energy portfolio, but, uh. Essentially, it's the same order. I'm glad that we have the State Delegation coming in to, um, add their two cents to this issue as well. Thank you.
I'm, I'm losing people on my end.
Matt, are you there? Can you hear me?
Alright, I can hear you now, Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Okay.
Alright, so Counsel. Lisi, that kinda broke up for me. I'm not sure if it broke up for everyone else.
I think this is a sign that we need to cut this meeting out.
Counsel Murphy?
I, I think it's a good order and. Counsel Anderson Burgos is okay. I like those signs. And I also would like us to look at, there's been some literature out now about. When we do do power lines underground, also doing it in major intersections. In winter where we're actually melting snow and we're not doing plowing. Uh, if we can include that thought is, uh, as part of this, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So it's to DGNR, copy to Finance, copy to State Delegation, copy to HGNE with an invite to the State Delegation to the meeting to discuss it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty is. Counsel Anderson Burgos. Order that section eighty-six dash three twenty-one of the city parking hours be amended by striking the following sections. North Hampton Street East, a point twenty feet north of Crozier, uh, a point two hundred feet north of Crozier Street. Two-hour parking, eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday.
Then to ordinance?
So to Counseler Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, um. I, I, I mean, I got no problems on this ordinance. I, I, I hope, I hope this is not the way I read it because, um. You know, I'm not gonna make an amendment to it right now, but I, 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 let's just make, be clear. I, I co-filed this with Counsel Anderson Burgos. Twenty nineteen. So I called him up and he added his name as a co-sponsor for this very ordinance. So I'm gonna suggest that somebody's asking him to do this and, and hopefully that'll be disclosed at some point. Uh, but this is what I believe is the parking, if I'm, I think I'm right, it's directly in front of, uh, People's United Bank and it's. Was implemented at the behest of. Uh, the, um, management there and I, I did it for, for them. And it was deemed to be a public safety issue and that's why it was supported by the DPW, the city engineer and passed unanimously by the City Council. Now, now, I, I, I have no problem if there's, if there's, uh, if there's a, a vendor near there or, um, if we have to modify it, but. Uh, it would have been nice if we discussed it back then, so I just, if the committee, if the ordinance committee, we just keep that, keep that in mind, that this, this was, this was approved. With my order, with the Ward Six Counselors co-filing in twenty nineteen, so we just passed it and we just put the signs up in twenty twenty, so. Just please consider that. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will someone help me out? My agenda seems to be different here.
Yeah.
Number thirty-nine. It, it, it is. It's the orders, the orders are, are ahead. And the agenda is one behind.
Yeah.
That's why I said earlier, I was trying to. Let you know where I was with these, cuz there was a discrepancy.
Yeah, but I also think it's different online too.
Who is it?
I'm using the one I got in the mail.
Yeah, I think that one's behind, so I, I don't know. I, I tried to disclose and I'm reading the numbers as best I can to. Tell you where we are. That's why I'm reading them all out.
I'm not afraid to say I'm lost.
And it doesn't help that I keep crashing. My, my thing keeps freezing up and some of yours is freezing up too, so I'm doing the best I can here.
You're doing a great job. Who takes over for you when you crash?
That one time, Counsel Barley kept talking, so it was a good thing. He, he let me jump back in.
Hey, you're a super user, Todd. You're a super user.
Yeah. You need a data cap. So this one, for me, this one says forty on this, but on the agenda, it's thirty-nine. But I read the order with regard to it. So this one to ordinance, unless anyone else to speak. No? All those in favor? All opposed? Next is from Counsel Leahy. It's number forty-one for me, but forty on yours.
Counsel, uh, uh, President, uh, McGinn, can we take up forty-one and forty-two?
Sure, motion is suspended. We'll take up forty-one and forty-two as a package. All those in favor? All opposed? Forty-one is DPW and Suez Water Technologies and Solutions provide a timely plan. To the Hoyoke City Council regarding street sweeping uh, for spring twenty-one. This work, a report should be specific as to when the sweeping will take place by neighbors and ensure the compliance and the contractor obligations. Last year, a similar was filed. There was, took up uh, many follow-ups and emails to get a response. I've been advised that this is an obligation that sweeps, uh, sweep every street. At least once verification of this minimum standard and plan to exceed it for our residents is appreciated. Email to me as Chair of the Public Ser- uh, Service Committee.
Can I make an amendment to, to as well have that uh, within fourteen business days?
Adding at the end, within fourteen business days. All those in favor? And then forty-two is from Counsel Leahy. Order that the contract with Suez coming to a close. In the next few years that the third party audit the facility, equipment and every aspect of the contents of the contract.
So I make a motion to receive uh, both of those. Um, send, um. The second one, I'd like to send to the mayor, also the purchasing.
Okay, so for the first one, receive and. Send to DPW and Suez with a response back in the fourteen days.
Yes, and a copy to Public Safety. Is that right, Terry?
It could be.
Alright. So, a- and I know Counsel McGivern, you have your hand up, so before that vote, you have a question about forty-one or forty-two?
I'm, I'm still lost when I have my hand up for the first time, Mr. President.
I'm just making sure.
I haven't known what forty-two to go to Finance though.
Alright, so forty-one, receive. Uh, adopt, send to DPW. Um, Suez to report back in fourteen days, copy to Public Safety. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, forty-two is the one where we're asking for a third party audit. Uh, the facility of the equipment and every aspect of the contents.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to receive, adopt, send a copy to uh, the mayor, send a copy to the Finance Committee. And um, like who would be in charge of um, doing a purchase during audit?
They'd have to hire someone. Good, at the purchasing, they'd have to have put out for bid.
So, and if I could, the reason behind this, if I could pull up Terry Murphy. This contract should be coming up soon. We have no idea with the status of the equipment. We have no idea with the status of. The real estate. We have no idea of the status of anything basically. So. I have no idea if we're gonna go with the contract again, but if we do, that's a great thing. If we don't, we should know, um. You know, what, what shape everything is in.
Counsel Lisi.
Uh, I don't have the floor any on here?
I thought you were done.
Oh, no. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, cause you, there was a pause. I thought you finished. Counsel Leahy, what, go ahead.
I was just thinking, uh, this is a very important contract. I was uh, in the city council when it first happened. And the fact is, we certainly should know all the assets the city has. The city um, uh, has retained. I also am very concerned about the fact that um. Over the last couple of years, we're told that they're utilizing some of our vehicles as well. And that, that's why I'm looking for a third party. Uh, to investigate this. Thank you. Now I'm done.
Okay, Counsel Lisi.
Uh, thank you. I think this is a great order. Um, I am under the impression to some extent that this is already in the works, but um, I think that having. The city council's eyes on it is really important. Um, with the maker's permission, I'd like to be added to this. Um, and. I, I don't know if the maker knows off the top of um, his head when the um, contract comes up. I know it's uh, in the next. Five, is it five years when it comes up or three years?
About three years.
I believe it's a twenty-year contract. I think uh, I was city councilor two thousand, I think maybe. I'm not sure. I think within three years.
Okay, no, it, it's, it's a good time to get this process started and we definitely need that information and. Um, I think it should also be on the table to some extent, who's paying for that third party audit. Um, whether it's going to be, you know, our DPW or Suez. So we should, um. We should perhaps ask. We should ask, you know, Suez to pay for it and see what they say.
Oh, we should tell Suez to pay for it. Um, yes, please, uh, thank you, uh, through the chair, uh, through Counsel Lisi. Please feel free.
So, alright, so Counsel Murphy, then Counsel McGivern?
Yeah, I also think it's a good order and if Counsel Leahy doesn't mind, I would sign on. I would also suggest as we look at. Uh, the contract with Suez and where that stands and, and what it would take to continue it. That we also look at if we don't continue that contract. What, uh, what are the impacts on the city services and what would be the financial impact? What would be the employee impacts? Uh, that we get a pro and con of having a contractor versus providing the service uh, ministerly. Um, and I think, you know, that would be uh. Uh, also part of a third party and that would be where I would be hesitant to have Suez pay for it because I think Suez pays for. Someone coming in. You can pick people to give you a good report. I'd rather have a totally neutral.
Well, that's why I said the third party, yep.
But if I can co-sign it, Counsel Leahy.
Oh, absolutely. Any, any person, anytime I find anyone, anybody to follow onto it.
Thank you. So Counsel McGivern next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The um, one, one of the issues, one of the issues here is that there's a. I, I, I can't remember where we heard this. I'm not even sure. I think we have to investigate it. Is that there's a five-year extension on the contract? That does not have to come before the city council is what we were told. Um, I, I don't have that in, you know, verified and I think we need to get a, get a, uh, ruling from the law department itself. Um, that makes a, makes a big difference. And the, the cost of uh, buying out Suez is astronomical. For, for the amount of money that there is invested into uh. Not just, it's not about personnel, it's about the uh, the equipment and stuff like that. So I, I think it's important that we get the answers, that we know exactly what we're dealing with and uh, I commend the maker of the orders. To get this discussion going.
Counsel Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Jim, I'd love to sign on to it. Um, I was there. I think you remember the, the discussion when this first came up. Remember the guy, the quarterback? Quarterback for the contract. I can, I can picture it like it was yesterday. Um, it is a big contract. I think it's uh. It's probably about six inches six and, and I remember a discussion about ten years ago that. If somebody came in and went through that contract, the cost that it was gonna be, I think it's. It's uh, well over probably a hundred thousand dollars just to look at that, read that whole contract. But I think it's worth looking into and uh. I know we had a discussion with uh, with them, Suez, about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago in Finance. And they gave us a brief rundown on things. Um, but it's important with the, the closing years here to. To take a good look at this and see where we stand uh, on, on either us continuing the contract with them or. The city taking it over, which, which could be very costly as Counselors uh, McGivern and uh, Murphy stated. So, thank you.
Counsel Granny, is your hand up or is that from before? Counsel Granny? Okay, so with this, we're adding Counsel Lisi, Murphy, Anderson Burgos and Tomlin. Did I miss anyone? No? And this is gonna go to?
Mr. President?
Yeah, yeah, Counsel Granny.
That, that, I pressed that about twenty minutes ago, that, the hand up.
Alright, so I just didn't know if it came down or went back up. I turned my head, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's not relevant, not relevant to this discussion.
No worries. So this was receive, adopt, copy to Finance, copy to Mayor. Copy to purchasing for the bidding. Did I get that right, Counsel Leahy?
Yes, sir.
Alright, all those in favor? All those opposed? Alright. We're now on to late files that are remaining. Late file A from Counsel McGivern. Order that. Uh, the amount of two hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents from Personnel Department, Police, Fire, Defecation. And Services. Well, it looks like a prior, a prior year bill paid in this year. That's what I think they're looking to do here.
That, that's correct, Mr. President. Um, this was a, something that I, I think we need to go to committee just to get the answers. What it is. It's very old and it's the prior year out of health insurance.
I make a motion to the Finance Committee.
Uh, to Finance, all those in favor? All opposed? D is from Counsel Hernandez. Order that the city council reexamine the current ordinance on which uh. The snow and ice shall be removed from the entire width of the sidewalk and all portions of the street in which the.
Make a motion to the Public Safety and a copy to DPW.
Motion to, or actually be ordinance, cause it's an ordinance change.
Make a motion to the ordinance.
So, so to ordinance, all those in favor? All opposed? And then E is the last one. It's the one that we were talking about earlier. From Counsel Hernandez. Order that the no parking on the S-shaped curve turn on O'Connor, that there be no parking. On the S-shaped curve turn on O'Connor app. The ordinance? All those in favor? All opposed? And that's all I have. Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Undebatable.
Have a great night, everyone. We'll see you next week. Good night.